We're going to go ahead and call the open session of the regular meeting of February 9th to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Lemon.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Present.
Councilmember Fitchula.
Yep.
Mayor Potem Mendoza.
Present.
Mayor Burris.
Present.
All right, moving to item 2D approval of the agenda order. I just want to go ahead and provide a piece of clarification tonight because I know what most of the crowd here tonight is here to discuss. As for item 9A, the scope of item 9A tonight is to discuss the scope of the existing licenses that are permitted under our current ordinance for cannabis. So I just want to be very clear, if anybody would like to speak to the number of licenses that are allowed under the ordinance, you would need to come up during item 7 on the agenda, which is public comment, because the number of licenses is not on the scope of item 9A. So if everybody understands, I think we can go ahead and call for a motion to approve the agenda order.
I have a question on the table.
Sure.
I have a question. Normally we have a thing in there that says report from the closed session. I don't see that in the agenda.
There was no reportable action.
Yeah, I know, but we still need to have the item.
So to be clear, there was no reportable action on closed session?
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda order?
I have a question on item 9A, because that's my understanding of what we talked about. But my understanding on 9A was we were to hear other people's input today.
Yes.
Not to make any decisions or talk about number of licenses or any of that other stuff. It's just to hear input. That's not quite what this says.
So we are not here to discuss the number of licenses tonight. However, council does have the ability to provide direction to staff as to how we wish to proceed, whether this is a conversation we're going to continue to have, whether we wish to have them proceed with making an ordinance change. You know, we're going to provide direction at the end of this as to where we sit. So we're going to receive public testimony and then council will discuss. So it's not that there's a specific staff recommendation for us to make tonight, if that makes sense.
It doesn't quite make sense to me.
Are we voting or not voting?
I'm going to let Nick.
All they're doing tonight in discussions is simple licenses under your ordinance. There is, for example, no adult use license permitted under your existing ordinance. One of the things you may want to direct staff, if you want to move forward with that, is to amend, you know, bring forward a proposed amendment to the ordinance to discuss adding adult use to your ordinance. Really, the simple question is, is the council in support of or opposed to amending its ordinance to allow adult use cannabis?
I understand that, but that wasn't what was brought up at the last meeting. The last meeting was to review other input.
Well, and that you're going to, I'm guessing, but I'm thinking you're probably going to have some input on that issue tonight and council will then discuss after the input is.
But it wasn't to review the scope of any of this.
I want to be clear that what I brought forward for us to agendize was for us to discuss and provide direction to staff. So that's what's on the agenda tonight.
I didn't, I don't remember that from the last meeting. I only remember the item of discussing other input coming in.
Can I join in? Is it appropriate?
Yeah.
Push your button, push your button.
I think I'm the one that said I'd like to just hear more and learn more. And so I think what Joe was trying to say, I also just assumed tonight was to learn more from both sides. And, and yeah, just give direction to staff as to whether or not to keep the dialogue going. But that, I just want to be clear, that's my understanding, my words.
And that is, that is correct. So I'm under the same understanding as you, is that we're here to hear public testimony. And based on public testimony, we will provide direction to staff whether or not this is something we're going to continue forward with a discussion on, or whether it's dead in the water.
That's not what the item says.
If it's at least like that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, but that's not what this item says.
I just want to be very clear, there is no requirement of council to make any policy decision tonight. Is that correct?
The only policy decision you would make is policy direction to your staff. You either move forward with bringing something to the council or not. Very simple. The policy issue is whether the council wants to consider adding adult use to its ordinance.
Because if we were to proceed with that, it would need to be a full-fledged discussion about the content, what we, you know. It's more than a yes/no. It's not, it's not that simple. So.
Yeah, because this opens up other things that we need to look at, you know.
So I want to be clear though, before we accidentally get into item 9A right now, because that's not what we're intending to do. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda order, or do we have, do we have something else on the floor?
I move to approve the agenda order, as it was just clarified. I make.
I'll second.
All right, can I have the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemon.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitchula.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mayor Burris.
Aye.
All right, we will go ahead and move to item 3, agency reports, beginning with Placer County Sheriff.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Schmidt, Lieutenant of the Sheriff's Office. I'm standing in on behalf of Sergeant Kevin Griffith, who's in LA at training. He sends his apologies for not being able to make it tonight due to training. I know there is an item on the agenda tonight that's going to take a lot of time. So I'll just let you know that there hasn't been much to report since the last meeting.
Okay, do we have CHP?
Hi, I'm Chris David, California Sheriff of Cholko, right here. Yeah, I'll be quick too, because it looks like we have other pressing issues. Just to say, DUIs are up, collisions are up, speeds are up nationwide, statewide as well. So if you guys saw the other night, we had a collision down in Roseville. Two innocent people, 21-year-old and 19-year-old stopped to help. An individual that came up on the collision, didn't see the initial collision, tried to swerve around it and then hit the two individuals that stopped to help and killed them. So we just asked, obviously, if you feel the need to do that, be very careful. We don't encourage people to do that just because of that reason. Jordan, people get killed at collision scenes when the people are standing outside of the vehicles. So other than that, I'm going to go back my time to deal with the other issues. So any questions from me about anything?
Thank you, Chris.
Good thing.
All right, moving to Placer County Fire Department, CalFire.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, and audience near and far. I'm Nolan Hale, Fire Captain, CalFire, Placer County Fire, at Station 30. Our stats are up. This month, we're about 15% to 20% busier than a normal January due to storm activity continuing. Just recently, we concluded today a six-acre broadcast burn on city property out behind a wastewater treatment plant, where we got about 80% consumption, helped kill off some noxious weed, and eliminated the fuel bed for the summer on those six acres. We have more plans in the works to continue. We contacted, for you, Mr. Fitchula, U.P., out of the Los Angeles office. That's who we got in contact with for the vegetation issues in there right away. And that overall vegetation manager is working with the local supervisor to come up with a plan to abate the snowdown and other herbaceous materials in there right away within the city. So it's on their radar and we're working with them on that.
And could you give us each month an update on where they're at?
I'd love to.
Okay.
I'd love to see something happen.
Yeah, because if nothing happens in a month, we're going to have to do something different.
Got it.
Yep.
New signs were installed on both fire stations. So if you're driving around, you can look at those. New bright shiny signs. And for our safety message this week, please continue to monitor your burn piles after you believe they have consumed. We're running about 10 vegetation fires on average in Placer County, and most of those are coming out of two- or three-day-old burn piles. So keep a watch on those or fully extinguish them. Do you have any questions or anything else for the fire department?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce. Do we have Chamber of Commerce chair this evening?
Madam Mayor, I don't see him here tonight.
All right. Okay, we will go ahead and move to item number four, presentation. It is the annual Bianchi update. Connie?
Connie Hyalman, President of the Sierra Vista Community Center and local business person. I think you've seen the report, so that I just wondered if you had any questions on it. I think some of our things coming up this year is we're going to try to use a little bit more of the funds to, since it's grown a little bit more from the year before, use some of the funds to do some capital improvements, like replace some of the windows and things that are almost falling out. And also, I would like to, as the public, we're looking, we're going to have our new, our new board directors are coming up. Elections are going to be in May, but we're looking for candidates. And we're looking for a lot of the younger people in the community that would like to be on the board, that have more energy, more energy than some older people would, to contact us. We'd like to get some new board members. And we'd even like to get one from each of our local nonprofits that has themselves on the board. Is there any other questions you have about?
Connie, that sounds like a fantastic idea. My question is, in order for people to run for the Board of Directors for the Sierra Vista Center, what are the requirements?
Just to be interested in the community and be interested in helping and improving the center.
Okay, and so what would they have to do to contact the Sierra Vista Center to get on the?
They would need to contact us at our phone number, which is 530-346-828726 for these centers. Or they can contact, I saw that at my store, Connie's divorce, leave a message. They really don't have to have any really qualifications, have a little time to help, help out, help us plant some more events for young and old, events, get more plants and more things happening.
So what is the deadline for people to come forward for that?
Probably would be March.
March?
Yeah, March, end of, yeah, March.
And how does nominations work for that? Do you guys nominate by the board? Or do you just throw your ring, your name in the ring? How does that work?
Throw your name in and we kind of put a few people to make sure that they have, have some qualifications that they can work together. And it's pretty simple. You're pretty much on, if you want to be on, you're pretty much on.
So just to be clear, the board whittles down the number of names? And who votes on the final, who's on the board? Membership.
We have a membership, but our membership for everybody, we need to recruit new members. And it's mostly supporting the community center, which is a, which is a nonprofit, not supported by the county or supported by the city, but not, not financially. And our membership for general persons is like $35.
So Connie?
It's a membership that votes on that election.
Would you mind if I asked that the community center come back to the next council meeting with a clear report on what, basically what you guys are asking and what the procedure is for people to join your board?
I think I was pretty clear with what it was. I know I'm going to be on the challenge.
Okay. If somebody from your board could provide that in writing to our city staff, I think that would be helpful. I'd like to get it documented so that we can help spread the word to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait, I got a question.
What's your question?
Yeah, I got a question. Can you explain to everybody what the Bianchi fund is about?
Okay, I was hoping you would ask that. This is, this happened about, about 20 years ago, even more than 20 years ago. I was the first president of the community center. And we had an older man that, that lived, grew up in, grew up in Colfax. And he used to, he used to give fruit to the people on the trains or sell to the people on the trains. And he has good memories of, of Colfax. And he didn't have any children. So in his estate, he lent money for, for the people of Colfax, for the, for the young and the, the young and the elderly specifically, but for everybody in Colfax. And he donated the first money to purchase the school that was, that the school where they were moving to a new school. So we purchased the new school for $200. And he started it. And yet, he had a fund that started out to be close to a million, but it dwindled down pretty fast. But the last 10 years, I think, we lost a lot of that. A lot of that sold when that downturn was, I believe it was in 2008. And it, and they, they did, they sold it instead of keeping it and waiting for it to go up again. But it was, the funds were about 380, that was been about eight years ago. And now, now they're up to five. We've been using the money for our insurance, our insurance. We now got on CalFire insurance. Our insurance went up a lot higher, which is going to be very hard for us to even work with. And so a lot of the money has been used for capital improvements on, on the building and for insurance. Does that give you a little idea?
Thank you.
Connie? We do not have any public hearings this evening. I'm going to move to item 6, which is our consent calendar. Do I have anybody who would like to make a comment or pull an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing then, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fitchula.
Aye.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemon. Mayor Potem Mendoza.
I have a question in the minutes. Guys already brought it up. Aye.
She said aye.
Okay.
Aye, sorry. I, they answered the question that I had. I had to.
And Mayor Burris.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right. That concludes the consent calendar. Moving on to item 7, public comment. Every resident has the opportunity to address the city council for comment when appropriate time for public comment is called. You may speak to the council on any item that is not on this agenda. The council cannot act on any items not included on the agenda. However, the items will be automatically referred to staff. Please come to the podium, speak your name clearly, and at your discretion, state your address. Please make your comments brief. You will have three minutes to do so. And if you are joining live via Facebook, please write "public comment" before your comments if you wish for them to be read. Do I have any public comment at this time?
I wanted to announce that we are going to have our Colfax Art Walk this summer. Because usually we start in May, but we're going to be starting in June. And that'll be every third Friday. We're working with the Lions Club, it's doing a partnership. So I wanted everybody to get that on their calendar. It'll be from June through September.
Okay.
And also, I've been working on a grant to get more, Placer Arts Council, getting a grant. But I think we might get two more murals in the alley coming up. And I think I'm working on a grant to help with promotion for the art walk too.
Wonderful. Thank you, Connie. Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening?
Call to action here. Do you understand the Board of Forestry proposed fire safe regulations under the new VOF regulations? You will not be able to pull building permits for your property if, one, your property is located on a dead-end road with only one point of ingress/egress, including cul-de-sacs and looped roads. Two, any road leading to your property that has a tight curve with an inside radius of less than 50 feet is narrow or that is in poor condition and cannot support fire equipment that weighs at least 75,000 pounds. Three, any shared driveway for two or more parcels will have to be upgraded to meet road standards. Four, any driveway exceeding 150 feet does not have a turnout near the midpoint of the driveway. If any driveway exceeds 800 feet, it must have two turnouts, no more than 400 feet apart. Five, your parcel is one acre or larger but does not have the minimum 30 feet setback for all the buildings from all the property lines and/or the center of the road. If your property is underinsured and burns down with this passage, nobody will have the insurance coverage to rebuild the home. The new proposed regulations would potentially force you, as the permanent applicant, to make all improvements to all roads from your lot parcel being developed to the nearest fully compliant roadway. Please send specific examples on how the proposed fire regulations will severely impact you and other property owners. We need concrete examples of real people who are either currently or in near future going to have to meet the proposed requirements and will not be able to do so for whatever specific reasons. We are trying to create a narrative where we can point to the proposed language and explain how this could impact life. Written comments shall be submitted to the following address, Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. Written comments shall be submitted to the following address, Board of Forestry and Fire Protection Intention, Edith Henigan, Land Use Planning Program Manager, BO Box nine four four two four six Sacramento, California, nine four, anyway. Written comments can also be hand delivered to the contact person listed in this notice at the following address, Board of Forestry and Fire Protection Room fifteen oh six to fourteen, fourteen sixteen Ninth Street, Sacramento. Written comments may also be sent to the board via facsimile at the following phone number, nine one six six five three zero nine eight nine. This is a fax number. Written comments may also be delivered by email at the following address, publiccomments@bof.cal.com.
And do you mind sharing your name and your relation to the city? And then, are you a resident?
I am.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment at this time? Do you have any on mine?
We do have one comment on Facebook from Wade Johnson, who states, maybe a little late, but thanks to the mayor for a response during the snowstorm. And then we did receive one email public comment that states, dear city council, and this is from Dirk Gifford at two one four Trejerton Street. Dear city council, I want to thank you for sending a snowplow to Mint Creek neighborhood after this December snowstorm. I know that our HOA president, Holly Graham, has thanked you and will be discussing a contract with the city. Thank you for sending the snowplow and opening our neighborhood. You made things so much easier for us by doing that. I was so impressed by the work of the city council members and city staff after the storm. The work you did in the weeks following the storm was heroic. I have told my friends and family about the work you did, not only sending snowplows out for long hours, but also setting up heating centers, providing food, including hot meals, providing firewood and keeping all of us informed. Your long hours, your dedication, your hard work made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have no more public comment in the room at this time, we will go ahead and close public comment and move to item eight. This is going to be the council and staff reports. And we will go ahead and start with Sean. Do you have any, any council report?
Thanks, Trinity. No, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Joe, you have anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, David?
Nothing at this point in time.
Okay, Marnie?
The only report that I have this evening is not a report, it's an extension. We were supposed to meet tomorrow and that's going to be put off until March, and that has to do with Placer County ad hoc on the homelessness that's going on. And we've been in talks for about six months now. The item was seen at the Placer Board of Supervisors yesterday. And so I will have more to report in March, once the team gets back together. And then it's going to be coming into public comment. So keep an eye out for that, everybody. That's going to be coming.
Okay, was, was that all you had? For tonight?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, no, the other one hasn't met either.
Okay, I have nothing to report tonight. We'll move to the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any reports for tonight.
Well, this meeting is just chugging along. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to council business, item nine A, adult use cannabis. I'm going to go ahead and throw this over to Mick. Real quick, I just want to, before we get started, I want to kind of poll the room, see who all we've got here tonight. I know we've got people kind of on all different positions or both sides of the aisle, whatever you want to call it. Can I get a show of hands? How many people are here tonight in opposition to us proceeding with this movement or discussion? If I could see them, okay. All right, and how many people are here in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. So based on the number of people we have here, as far as the public comment section is concerned, we had discussed giving thirty minutes to each side and then opening it up and, you know, just asking people to be conservative with their time so everybody gets a chance to speak. Does council feel like that is adequate or should we push for forty five minutes per side and see how it goes?
We have a lot more on one side than the other, so I don't think having the time balance, I think we should go back to three minutes a person.
I'm okay with thirty minutes per side.
Marnie?
I would like, I'll sit here all night, but thirty minutes sounds good and fair.
Unless you would counsel be open? If, if we haven't addressed everybody in the thirty five minutes, can we go to forty five and allow forty five for both sides? And since we have more people here in opposed, we'll let them go first so that we can set the time base on them. Does that sound fair? I, I really don't want anybody to be left out, but at the same time, I don't want to filibuster it and have everybody here till three AM. So Sean, do you have any input?
I agree with Joe. Everybody should get three minutes, but it sounds like you have a consensus, so we can go with that.
Okay. All right.
I'm not sure, is the consensus thirty minutes per side?
Yes.
Okay, no, he said three minutes.
Well, he said three, you said three, but us three said thirty minutes.
I'm okay with thirty minutes per side.
I'm okay with thirty minutes per side.
Yes, council's prerogative.
Okay.
Well, then you will start the clock. I, I assume you're going to call the opponents first, let them speak.
Well, Mick, if you want to just give a brief overview on what we're here to discuss and then we'll go ahead and get started. And like I said, we'll exercise flexibility here to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, people need to be clear, because even when I was coming down here, they're still, they're not clear.
You have a question?
If there's a lot of people here that have prepared statements to make, or if you only give thirty minutes, that means a lot of things.
It, it's not, it's not three minutes per person, it's thirty minutes per side. And so with the council would, would like you to kind of use your time judiciously and efficiently.
So it does end up coming down, if there's ten people to speak, that does come down to three minutes per person, so.
What if they don't know each other?
Again, if, if you guys want to read your statements and we're kind of pushing the time limit, I'm okay with going up to forty five minutes if the council is okay with that as well.
Actually, I have an idea.
Yeah.
You had everyone raise their hands, right?
Yep.
And it looked like it was maybe seventy percent, yeah, seventy, seventy-five percent.
I should probably clarify too, how many people actually want to speak?
Well, I was going to say, maybe we just divide it up amongst like, how many people want to speak? Just get sixty minutes allocated time and then whatever that ratio is of opponent or opponent, maybe go that way.
How many people wish to speak in opposition tonight? If I could get a show of hands?
They're probably just as low off doing the three minutes per speaker. Council's prerogative.
About five minutes per speaker?
How many was it?
It's less than ten. So let's just stick with the thirty minutes.
Okay.
All right, um, we'll go ahead and get started. If the sheriff's department wants to go ahead and go first, that, that would be great for me. Oh, okay. Okay. Who, who would like? Yes, yes, the opposition is going first. Uh, we're, we're taking.
Okay. Can I recognize somebody in the room, please, that I'd like to hear from? I mean, is that okay for me to do that at this point? I just want to recognize somebody that's here.
We got a question here. Try to answer.
Yes.
The law doesn't say that. The law basically says that councils have been set time limits, total time limit per, per side or total time limit or time limit per speaker.
It's not a public hearing. Yeah, because it's not a public hearing, there, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
So this is more of an open format. It gives us more flexibility. That way we can make sure everybody gets heard. And we are going to have the opposition speak first because, sorry.
Well, that's a, that's, that's your prerogative.
If the proponents wish to go first?
Well, I see a doctor here that.
You know what? Maybe it would just be easier to give everybody five minutes and get in line. I think Joe's right.
Yep.
Everyone's good with that, let's just do five minutes and everybody just get in line.
So it's not going to be separated by proponents and opponents, just everybody who wants to speak, stand up to speak.
All right, Dr. Namely, just like you, get it. All right, three minutes per person. If you guys want to go to line up, we'll go ahead and go. That's. It sounds like we're probably, if this does go forward, we're probably going to have additional, additional meetings as well. And, yeah, and I don't want the, and I understand that as well. Maybe, maybe you can give us some tallies on that because that makes sense.
They did.
Emails arrived.
And. It, it sounds like there was an issue with the email address that people were trying to email. I saw a bunch of screenshots about it.
Can I ask the question? If we're having a discussion back and forth, the people online can only hear part of it.
Right.
So we can't have discussions back and forth.
Let's move into public comment on the item.
Thank you. My name is Don Mathias, one minute five pounds away. I'm a resident of Colfax, but I work at Weimar University. And one of my things I do there is I do mental health counseling for the past fifteen years, not there, but totally. And I'm also the pastor of the church that started there in Weimar recently. I'm against having marijuana dispensed for recreational use because of the impact on brain health, which I've really seen in my counseling, both as a pastor and also as a mental health counselor. And also the impact on suicidality, planning and psychotic episodes. I'd like to say I have no personal experience of this, but years ago, when I actually was using marijuana at one brief time in my life, I did have those same things. And so I know firsthand of the impact, not to mention the impact on driving and also daily life and looking at purpose in life. And so we offer actually options to help people address the very real health concerns. I would say, I think the reason people want to use these substances is because there's a lot of anxieties, a lot of stress, there's a lot of really poignant needs that the public has. And I think there are better ways to address that. And I know that we offer programs and we offer solutions at Weimar University that we're very happy to share with the community. We're very involved in the community with Total Community Involvement, TCI. And we are very concerned and very thankful for your leadership here and for our opportunity to serve the community. So any way we can help, we want to put ourselves out there to be a part of the solution that is being addressed by actually the requests for this dispensary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Neil Nedley and live at seventeen five oh five Chicago Park Powerhouse Road, Colfax. And I'm also the medical director of a mental health program that we have at Weimar University where we treat people from all over the world. And I can tell you, being involved in mental health for the last twenty years, as well as looking at the research, we are making a big mistake at increasing the access to marijuana products. Yes, they do produce some short term calming, but they actually lower the dopamine set points, meaning that we're going to lower the motivation of those who use it eventually, except for how they're going to get their next marijuana. And that's why it's a good business if you can suppress the frontal lobe of people and increase their motivation for frontal lobe suppressants. It's a great way to make money without a lot of work. Yeah, but the problem is, is what it does to the individual. It does increase the risk of psychosis dramatically. Psychosis is going up significantly. If you are genetically predisposed to psychosis, you will actually increase your risk sevenfold by just your first marijuana usage. Now, they will talk about, well, we're going to separate CBD from THC. Can't completely separate it. And the marijuana that's used today is far greater in THC than what it was in the hippie generation that I grew up in. In addition, the largest study done by the National Academy of Sciences shows that it lowers IQ permanently for those that have repeated use. In addition, it lowers emotional intelligence. That lowers your ability in regards to relationships and also in regards to managing your own emotions. And there are simpler techniques of doing this. I can just give you one, but there are many. There's one called lavender oil. Lavender oil has been tested against lorazepam, which is actually far more calming than marijuana ever would be. Lorazepam actually also suppresses the frontal lobe. It has a hook, it is addictive. But Lovella has no hook whatsoever and it's been shown to be anxiety relieving. Why aren't these proponents actually encouraging the use of something that can help anxiety without causing any of the problems? And we want to really improve anxiety and depression rates without increasing the risk of a whole host of things. And lastly, in my last fifteen seconds, the violence aspect of things. One of the things that you're often not told, but if you research it out, school shootings, mass shootings, they all have one characteristic in common on board and that is marijuana. And so you are going to increase.
Thank you.
All right, my name is Gary Howard and I'm a community member, also a resident of the nine five seven one three zip code and pastor of Colfax Baptist Church for the past twelve years. Before I give my rebuttal opposing the GSPC being allowed to sell marijuana recreationally or adult use or those who do not have a medical card, I do want to say to the family wanting to start it up, that I do care for you personally. And we were blessed to be able to serve you this past summer after your tragedy. So please don't take personal offense to this. I grew up during the eighties and not early nineties, which was a time in which preteens and teens were introduced to gateway drugs like marijuana that led to the use of more hardcore drugs and the lifestyle of addiction. I still have friends today, some in their forties, some in their fifties, thirty years later, who are still addicted to drugs. Even though many in my growing up generation dig drugs consistently, it was not as readily available as it is today with our hometown dispensaries, nor was marijuana as potent as it is today. No matter what we do, having marijuana sold recreationally to adults will have it more readily available to children and to youth. Hillary Clinton was actually the one who coined the term medicinal marijuana for various purposes. And one purpose was for us to be able to ease our acceptance of it into society. So to the city council members, I urge you to consider, do you want a more drug community than we have today? Please let us not be sheep who go along with what society is doing and do not let greed pollute your mind to do what is right, not only for our community as a whole, but also for our children. Marijuana that is more readily available in our dispensaries will be more readily available to our kids. That's just the way that it works out. Please vote no to allow recreational status to GSPC or to any other business in Colfax. Thank you.
Hello, Connie Schmidt, again, sent over to the sheriff's office, representing sheriff's office. When I think about recreational use of marijuana in dispensaries where they're located, I think about the communities. And what, what communities thrive in dispensaries around them? What, what is the monetary value about that? But it's mostly about the cost. It's a known fact that across the country, across the state, that sensibilization of marijuana, DUIs have increased, impaired driving has increased, crime has increased. The use of marijuana by our youth, twelve years and older, younger teens, young adults and beyond, has also increased. While the treatment for that due to mental health has actually decreased. So what a play is that making with, with the decision to allow medical or marijuana into our communities by having a dispensary? Using statistics from twenty twenty, COVID really kind of dissuaded us from using twenty twenty one stats. Marijuana was the most violent drug due to its costs. Locally here in Colfax that year, Placer County Sheriff's Office actually investigated a violent crime that resulted in a murder that was here in Colfax in the area due to, due to marijuana. We've also investigated other murders, violent crime, including home invasions, property crime. And we've also had five hundred confirmed grows. Those grows are consistent, personal grows, moderate to large resident use and Mexican drug trafficking organizations. and Mexican drug trafficking organizations and Chinese organized crime. These growing sites, they might not be here locally in Colfax for you to see every day. However, they desecrate the communities that surround them. The water tables are disappearing, the fertilizer that gets into the soil, and the communities around them are just being demolished because of the growths. Not, not to mention the huge fire danger that they bring to the, to the table as well. In 2020, the sheriff's office eradicated over 20,000 marijuana plants. And that's in addition to over 3,300 processed marijuana substance. So what's the cost analysis? Let's break this down. So with increased marijuana crime, including DUIs and your driving, all the other crimes, law enforcement in general will be more involved in those crimes, more use of those services, while depleting the community from the services that we're going to be giving them. That's a huge cost. What's the tax revenue? Is it minimal at best? So with all of that information, I want you to know as a representative of the sheriff's office, I respectfully advise you that we oppose the use of cannabis as we tell says.
Good evening. My name is Lori Bergenstock. I'm a program coordinator for Mothers Against Drunk Driving in the Sacramento area, including Placer County. You've heard the stats from CHP, just heard the stats from Placer County. We know for a fact that drunk driving is increasing. And it's not just drunk driving. It's driving percentage of car crash deaths in the United States involving cannabis have doubled between 2000 and 2018. One of the things that researchers are finding is that more and more there are poly use DUI crashes. So someone's under the influence of alcohol and under the influence of cannabis. And we know for a fact that driving under the influence of alcohol is definitely an impairment. We know that driving under the influence of cannabis is also an impairment. Those two together is becoming more and more dangerous for us out on the road. Those are stats. I can tell you that the number one leading cause of car crashes for youth, teenagers is car crashes. I can tell you that three out of five of those will involve drugs or alcohol. They're stats. What I know for a fact is that there are faces and there are people and there are names behind that. CHP Gold Run Thanksgiving weekend dealt with a crash where someone was going long way on Highway 80 and killed a whole family. One four-year-old lived. CHP had to, had to deal with that. Family lost them. We have these little cards that are remember me cards. This one's Logan McDonald, who was killed when he was 19, down in Auburn on his motorcycle at 3:30 in the afternoon. Someone driving the wrong way and hit him. I work with families every single day whose lives have been completely ripped apart by drunken and impaired driving due to drugs and alcohol. We have a, a saying, we have a dream. We hope that we have a future one day where we have no more victims. The only way that's going to happen is communities coming together, businesses coming together, and for us to do everything we possibly can to remove the elements that are going to contribute to that. So I would just encourage you to do whatever you can to help stop this 100% preventable violent crime. Thank you.
Think. I'm here because I, I'm worried like the rest of these people. And I've told you this before. I, my husband was in the blues drummer for an old man named John Lee Hooker. And we, I drove his band. We went all over coast to coast, blues, Canada, United States. We partied actually from coast to coast. And I got to see firsthand, I was from Maine. I never heard of marijuana until like to Boston. And, and I, I never understood all this. It was coming out here, meeting my husband, going on the road like this. I saw a lot and I saw what starts it. And the, the first two things that I noticed were marijuana and mostly alcohol and marijuana. And that's what started everything. And then they go on from there. Most of those people are dead. I'm about the only one alive, except for Clark Drell and wow, those guys all died too. So, you know, it's, it's, it is a gateway drug. It is dangerous. I know this because not only have I experienced it myself and I've been involved with it. I had to stop and I had to clear my mind. And when I did, see, I was smoking every day too. And I didn't, you know, you don't really know who you are when you're doing that because you're, you don't have your own mind. Even though you think you do, you don't. And I had to stop that when I had kids. Then I cleaned up and I cleared up and I realized I was, I could be a different person. I didn't need to have this. I could sink on my own. I could grow on my own and I could, I could be healthy mentally on my own. I did not need marijuana and basically, and alcohol. All I can say is I'm scared for these kids. I, I became a teacher later. I've seen this for 25 years. I have seen how the kid, how it starts from up here, high school, then it goes down into junior high. I taught junior high, I taught at-risk kids, and then it goes down, it's going down now to fifth, sixth grade. I don't even know how low. These guys go out, they smoke a joint, they come back and, and you're supposed to teach them. Well, obviously mentally, their mind isn't in a position to do that. If it's available, readily available, more kids are going to use it. I know this. I know this. Am I done? Okay.
My name is Elizabeth Vincent and I live in the nine, five, seven, three, six district. As a teacher in training at Weimar University, I am very concerned about the possibility of recreational marijuana coming to our community for adults due to the reason that it becomes more readily available to young people. It impairs frontal lobes and the frontal lobe is where we make decisions about how to control our motions and learning. It impacts memory. I'm worried about the mental health impact this will have on our students because mental health services in schools are stretched. Why would we want to hurt students, young people? Because of allowing adults to use a drug that hurts their brains as well. Scientifically, we know it hurts the developing brain. And so why would we want to hurt our children and give them a bad example as adults? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melinda Neely and I live in Colfax. I'm a resident. And if we allow recreation dispenser, our town will be known as a cannabis town and not the train town. If it's the only dispenser in Placer County, what kind of people would that bring up here? They'll raise the homeless. My daughter lives in Brookings and they have more than one dispenser and it's not a big town. They have an issue of homeless people there. At my work, we're having a hard time finding people to pass the drug test to work. If we allow the recreation dispenser, people are not going to be able to get good jobs because it can't pass the drug tests. These companies, they have insurance. They want you to take the drive test so they don't have accidents at their work. And what kind of example are we for the kids if we adults allow this dispenser? I just want to say, just think before you make your decision. People's lives are more important than money. People living a productive life than doing marijuana and not be able to get a good job. So please think before you vote. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Ann Kruger and I live at nine, well, I live on Magnolia Ranch Road. I think some people might say, well, they, they'll just go someplace else to get it. We might as well make the money here. They can go down to this other county. You know, that, that there's no point in trying to stop it. But my, my answer to that would be, I grew up in Texas in a dry county. And yeah, I mean, you could go to the next county over, but that said something to us as young people that, that our lawmakers believed in something and stood for it. And it meant something to us. I never ever was tempted to even drink and most of my friends were not either. And you knew there was a few, you know, that would go and do that, but it's still, it just set a precedent. It just kind of, kind of got us on the right road, looking up to our, you know, our leaders. So I just wanted to put that in.
What else do we have here to speak tonight? Come on up.
Managed the dispensary here in town. That's a lot of our customers, not just the local, the place, you know, like we have in the past. I got a little petition going. It was about 22 tax payers, 34 residents and 38 businesses on this Colfax. We're on the same side as the sheriff. We don't want black market gardens, you know, these illegal gardens. We're trying to direct it the other way, you know, making this pass will probably ease their job a little bit.
At this time, adult use cannabis is being sold in Colfax unregulated and accounted for by our city. This is happening by means of out of town delivery, traveling to the next town or by the convenience of black market sales through friends and acquaintances. It seems more reasonable to allow adult use cannabis to be sold alongside medical cannabis in the same fashion as the state current issues licensing. The market is here. We're just arbitrarily not able to currently participate. I would like to see the council stop segregating medical from adult use and take control over that market. Right now, council is intentionally limiting sales to medical only and subsequently applying a tax to people specifically purchasing cannabis medication by means of measure C, which passed in 2018. This would be a moot point if current policy did not specifically limit or label sales and classify them as medication only. The retail tax would no longer give off the perception of being a targeted at sin taxing to sick. I don't want to debate whether cannabis is a good or bad thing. We all have rooted opinions on the morality of consumption of the substance that likely won't be swayed here today. Adult use is currently legal and the discussion is more about fair business policies. The sales won't change. I'm sure the tax money would be nice, but it won't be a huge increase as we, being the only current retail license holder, we're a small family business. It would be fair and just. It would be the right thing to do if Colfax could take responsibility over the regulation of the market that is already on our borders, rather than keeping your eyes closed on the matter. This topic has a huge community support in favor of Colfax retail license holders being allowed to provide their products to adults. And it would be more beneficial for law enforcement to have the enforcement authority of the city backing them up, rather than you inadvertently ignoring it through loopholes in your policies. I have faith that this council is able to see the logical reason for this change to the policy. I hope to see you allow good policy prevail against the stigma associated with this topic.
If anyone else would like. Yes.
I would like to ask a question of each of the council members here today, but thank you for being here. Thanks for the public representatives. To my first, I'm going to reply one at a time. We're not here to promote intoxicated drivers. That's not what we're here doing. Colfax, you can grow in your yard. Every single person in the city can grow adult use in their yard and give it to a friend once a day. That's a fact. I'm sorry, I'm a little tight. For the university gentlemen, there's grant funding money for you to do studies yourselves on cannabis. If you would like to get into that, I could address you the right direction. There are studies to where you can come here with some actual physical knowledge of what you presented yourself. And that's for you, the sheriff's department. We don't want cannabis. We don't want cannabis in the youth. Okay? We don't want to, we're not promoting cannabis use. We're promoting, we're on your side. We're promoting all cannabis everywhere in the community and trying to get it out of everybody. It's not operating through any stands and put it in one, one area. As it is right now, you can get a van and park anywhere in your community. Anywhere in your community, again, locally, it's a thousand dollars of the product. And they put up a GeoFix, which is where you go online and search for weed and they shop up. Puts us out of business, you know? And as far as the, you know, the alcohol, stocks on alcohol at every store. You're worried about people dying here, drunk driving. Don't lay it on us. We're trying to break it into shorter ones. We're not trying to spread it out. And there is actually, I have, there's a thing called the green light. And it's a way to train officers how to detect people that are intoxicated by cannabis. And you can get funny for that. And if anything goes further, I would like to be standing at those classes on that program for this sheriff. Pharmacies are going to be selling cannabis, giving it out hospitals. What have they done so far as controlling any kind of drugs? If you're a 16-year-old, you can go pick up opioids for your mom at the pharmacy in this state. You have 20,000 drugs you can pick up at the pharmacy. They don't need 20,001. Okay, we're not pushing drugs. We're controlling drugs. We don't want kids to use drugs. I have two teenagers at home, 17, 19. They don't smoke weed. I'll be, you know, not that I wouldn't care if they did, but not everybody smokes weed. We're not all four people smoking weed. We just want to get our fair share of the market before the people you don't want in your neighborhood get their fair share of the market. There are. Do we have anyone else for?
Hi, excuse me. I'm just going to be real brief. I'm not here to discuss the right and wrong. We all have done that till I'm blue in the face. But what I am going to say, I agree with most of it. Law enforcement. I believe what you're talking about. Our kids are going to experiment. We all did it. You're going to experiment with alcohol, tobacco, kiloine, magnifying glass. I don't know. The kids are going to experiment. And granted, some of this perhaps, not because of us, but maybe the parents have bought cannabis from us and their kids get it. They're not going to die. Everything we have is tested by the state and it has to pass very strict guidelines. Okay? So if kids are going to get it, wouldn't you want them to get it here instead of going down on the street where anybody can get it? And maybe it's laced with fentanyl and maybe a kid's going to die because of that. No kids ever, any person has ever died because of marijuana overdose, ever. And they won't. You can't congest marijuana. Alcohol, you know, different story. You take a, a fifth of whiskey and an ounce of weed and both of them are going to get you to where you want to be. And you'll take a shot of whiskey. If that works, good. Take another one if it doesn't. Same thing. You don't have to smoke a whole joint. You know, if you need to be calmed down, you can take one puff of it. And if that doesn't work, take another. We just went through horrible catastrophes in our town. The fire that wiped out a bunch of people, the snow thing, 10 days without power. How you like somebody walking into my store that doesn't have a recommendation, that's gone through all of this stuff? They're nervous, they're upset. I can't give them anything. I can't sell them anything. You guys know what's right, most of you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else for public comment? Oh, I apologize. I did have a council member request a free sauce. Oh, I apologize. Um, I did have a council member request a quick recess. So we'll go ahead and take this. And then once we come back, you will be the first person for public comment if that's all right. Yeah, no, 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 you, it can be no matter what. You can skip. Yeah, there's no. Do you have anyone to lead this? Um.
My name's Brett Franchu, and this is my five-five-seven-six. Close the mic, okay? So, um, I come from Africa and seen a lot of damages of marijuana use. I do believe that the statistics of Dr. Nedley is correct, that it does lower IQ. And personally, I've had experience with both alcohol and marijuana. Alcohol never affected my driving like marijuana does. So my prediction, then start the clock, my prediction is that this, if this motion is passed, you will see in hindsight that the accidents have gone up with the next families.
So we have some Facebook comments. Okay, so we do have a comment from Donna DeN.
Sorry, Margery. I just want to try to make sure we get a good sound check first. Um, Sean, are you able to hear us okay on your end?
Yeah, I've been over here, everybody. Thank you.
Oh, perfect. All right. Go ahead and proceed, Marg- Margery.
Okay, Donna DeN is saying, good evening. As I listen to tonight's comments, I do understand both sides to this. What I have not heard thus far is anyone is giving any credit to use cannabis responsibly. Like alcohol, you have to be responsible. Right now, any adult can have cannabis delivered in or to Colfax. You have no idea who is bringing in what. The dispensary is highly regulated. Thank you for listening.
Um, we can always circle back to that. Um, let's go ahead and acknowledge what we have as far as written comments. Um, we did receive, well, actually, Margery, I'm going to let you speak to the numbers if that's okay as to what we've received.
Yeah, definitely. And the other two comments now are populated on Facebook. Carla Jamison states, I would like to offer my support on approving this item. Here is why, as a mom of an amazing special needs young man who suffers from anxiety and panic due to an in utero stroke. I have found it by dosing with a CBD tincture versus the traditional Ativan, Clonopin. Not only does it calm him down and keep him going, it does, doesn't knock him out for hours. I work in the medical field and I can tell you that medical professionals are truly seeing the benefit of CBD for a variety of ailments from rheumatoid, rheumatoid arthritis, CPD, anxiety, Crohn's, insomnia, intestinal issues, cancer, and so much more. There is an unfair stigma on the CBD that ironically has been a variety of treatment options. As example, Botox, years ago when my son's neurologist mentioned using this for my son's spasticity, I was floored and I had only known of it being used for frown lines, wrinkles, et cetera. I am thrilled to say that I was wrong. So let's please get modern and give people back their quality of life. Carla Jamison, two-one East Oak Street, number one. Wade Johnson states, it is not fair to blame cannabis for accidents caused by DUI when it was the choices of the people who used it. So unless you're going to outlaw alcohol, there's no difference in the use of either. I feel as if the opposing side is using emotions to fuel their side instead of coming in with facts. At the end of the day, you are responsible for your actions and you're making the illegal production flourish. The argument that a child can get their hands on it is easier from a dispensary that is twenty-one plus. It is not the cause of it being recreational, but the cause of poor parenting. There's multiple towns with dispensaries that do not have these issues. And then we did receive forty-four email public comments. Two were against opening up adult use cannabis and forty-two were for that.
We do have a, um, this is a petition.
And Sergeant Griffiths would like to speak as well via Zoom.
Yeah, Sergeant Griffiths would like to speak really quick and then I will just, uh, well, let me just acknowledge the petition I have in front of me really quick. Um, it looks like we have fifteen signatures, um, from folks who are in Meadow Vista, Colfax, Weimar, uh, two more Colfax, another two Colfax, 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 Meadow Vista. See, that is Shady Glen, Shady Glen, Colfax, Colfax. Um, these are all opposed to adult recreational marijuana dispensary in Colfax. Yeah, so if Sergeant Griffiths would like to speak. What's up? No, no, this was just brought up by Diane and I just wanted to make sure it was acknowledged. So, uh, we can definitely make a comment or a copy of it and make sure it's entered into the public record.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council, this is Sergeant Kevin Griffiths with the Plac County Sheriff's Office. Your station commander, I'm assuming that you can hear me all right?
Quiet, but we can hear you.
I just wanted to get on here. I'm sorry. I've been in LA all week, jumped off an airplane, got out to the parking lot and felt I needed to speak as your representative for the sheriff's office. I can understand both sides of this, truly understand both sides of it. I've done narcotics up in Humboldt, taken down a lot of glows up there. I can see the effects it has on kids. I currently coach a baseball team. And I can tell you, I've seen teenagers, I've coached for the last ten years. I've seen teenagers go from bright individuals out there playing the game. As they get older, they started experimenting with that marijuana. Their attention band, attention span drops. They become almost lethargic. They're not quite into doing all the fun stuff anymore. I did hear somebody speak about, about stress times, right? We went through it with the river fire. We went through it with snowstorm twenty-twenty-one. America has been through a lot of those times. We went through World War II and we didn't have dispensaries around there. We counted on our community to take care of each other. We didn't go look for a drug to supplement. Some people did. That was close to the seventies. But a lot of people went to their neighbors' houses and became community members. And that's what we need to get back to is being a community that takes care of each other, not dependent on a drug or some outside influence. Depression rates are off the hook with COVID. The kids are struggling. The communities are struggling. I'm not sure that adding adult use marijuana is going to make that any better. I've heard for the last year, um, one of the DeN's get up in front of the city council after every major event and say, hey, if we had adult use, we would have this medical clinic here. I'm not sure where that money would come from. We've already heard that there's not going to be a lot of tax dollars for that. But we keep getting these promises with nothing that's helping so far. I'm just not sure the medical marijuana use is the, or that general use marijuana dispensary is going to work for us. I can tell you that, yeah, there are classes for deputies to go to to learn how to detect marijuana, but they're still not a quick test. There's not a pull over, hey, blow into this machine. Oh, you're over the legal limit. In fact, the legal limit is still an argument as to what legal limit is for marijuana. So I just want us to use caution and not, not go to the general use marijuana. I want a lot more things to happen so that we can protect the community better as the sheriff's office. Thank you. And unless there's any other questions, that'll be all for me.
Uh, do we have any additional public comment from anybody who has not had an opportunity to speak in the room?
There are two additional Zoom comments or speakers.
All right, let's go ahead and take our Zoom speakers.
Christine De Smears.
Yes, hello. Thank you. So I wanted to say something in this because honestly, I know there's a lot of people who are afraid that their kids are going to get their hands on it, that their kids are going to do something with it. But let's face it, if their kids want to do something with that, if they want to experiment, they're going to find it, whether or not someone is selling it to someone who is twenty-one and over in town. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that if their kids want to experiment with pot, they're going to do it and they're going to find it on their own. And if what they're worried about is that, okay, so mom bought it from somewhere in town, they're going to steal it from their parents and maybe they should actually have some, uh, talk with them or something along those lines. Anyway. So I would like to see this go ahead. I am for having the dispensary have the ability to sell this recreationally. Because as they said, they're losing revenue. This is money that could actually come and stay here in town instead of go to a delivery service or have everyone that does partake for their own reasons, whatever that might be, that's all going to other counties right now. That's either going to Nevada County or they're getting a delivery from Nevada County or they're getting Sacramento County. They're going down to Sacramento to get it. So for everyone who's worried about their kids getting into it or if they're worried about what it means to drive under the influence, we just heard from a Placer County Sheriff's Office who just informed us that there is no definition what that means. So why are we, that's, that's less of an issue for me than it is than, than it is to see this money stay in our town for it to help our economy grow as a small town. So I guess there you have it. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, our next Zoom comment.
Yvonne, did you have something to add?
Actually, I was just, I was doing that on behalf of Christine. I wasn't sure if you guys were taking the comments from Zoom, but I can go ahead and speak on behalf of my feelings on it. I do, I agree with Christine as far as, um, the, you know, dispensing of recreational marijuana to, you know, individuals twenty-one and over, um, as adults. I think that, um, you know, I use it personally for my epilepsy, um, in, in the CBD format. And in, in that, we would have that availability here within our town so that I could go and get the CBD portion of it without having my medical license. And instead, I'm going down to different counties to get it or have it delivered from outside. So I do, I agree with Christine as far as, um, being able to, you know, we need to monitor our children, period. And, um, you know, people are going to grow in their, their backyards. I do. So, you know, it's legal. It's legal in the state of California for recreational. I think that we're missing an opportunity to bring in extra revenue into our city of Colfax and the people, um, in the area. So that's all I have to say.
That's, that's all for Zoom.
Okay. And if we have no additional, oh, do you have an additional comment? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Simone. I am from the same area as most people here or some people. Nine-five-seven-three-six. I'm sorry. I just wanted to add my two cents here. Uh, I was a kid who didn't experiment. Not everyone does. And it's because I was raised with morals against it. And I think a lot of what we're speaking of tonight, it does go back to a deeper issue. It goes back to morals. It goes back to parenting. It's not just a decision made separately. It's not just a decision made separately from the rest of the influences in your life, and that's worth noticing. And. Making this more accessible, I don't believe it is as simple as just giving quote freedom. True freedom is not given unless you are willing to tell the truth on all ends of the spectrum, both sides of things, and to present a clear picture. So. I would also like to say that God has very clearly in his law, in the Bible, laid out what he expects, but also the consequences. He's laid out the options and also able to show you what it looks like when you go beyond those certain bounds. He's very open, he's very honest about these things. And it behooves us to follow that example and tell the whole truth because marijuana does harm and that is worth knowing. So educate, educate, educate.
Thank you. Alright, make last call for public comment at this time. We've been taking both sides the entire time.
Uh, I would also like to make a brief response to some of the things that have been stated this evening. Uh, my name is Nathaniel Jensen, I come from the same address as also others, nine five seven three six address. And um. I would like to first of all say to those who have suggested that the experimental um aspect of growing up and youth. While true, youth will do what they want to do and sometimes in the most stubborn way possible. I myself am the stubborn youth, however, um I did not experiment with such things because I um. Like others were grew up with morals that said that this is not a good thing to practice. But for those of my friends who did not grow up with those morals and I have a cousin who did not, um. It would have been beneficial to have barriers against these corruptions and one of those barriers is the law. And when something is made legal, it is much easier to get in, the barrier of entry is basically broken down. If that barrier of entry had been there in a more strong way, I think that my cousin could have been saved much trouble. And that is a fact, so for those who were suggesting that facts have not been stated, I would also. Redirect them to consider the fact stated by the second presenter this evening. That is that psychosis is increased seven percent by or seven times by just the first usage. And this product, if you might call it that, lowers IQ permanently um by long use. And also for those who are suggesting that it's beneficial for anxiety um or the other stated diseases. As was also stated earlier, they found that the same benefits can be achieved using things like lavender. Um, and those are less addictive and less harmful alternatives. And for those who are suggesting that revenue might be increased by um centralizing the use of this product in one place. I would argue against that because I've personally worked in a clinic where I have worked with individuals. Struggling to get off of these substances and it is a it is a task that requires hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay. Numerous medical staff to pay people to call them up and try just to get them off of this drug. That is a mind altering drug, it is designed to be addictive. And I have seen the detrimental effects with my with my own eyes and so I am against this. Um, dispensary being established in this place for um the supposed good of all because it will not be for the good of all. And when we look back retrospectively, we will see that it is a good decision that we have made to not go for this. But if we have to look back and say uh and see the detrimental effects that will occur, then I think that we'll be that we will be terribly sorry. So um in conclusion, I think that the greatest joys in life are found in relationship, in service and in integrity. And relationship and service and many of those other aspects cannot be achieved when their mind is under the influence, thank you.
You know, it's gonna take us a lot longer to get through everything, but I don't see a reason. To deny that request since it's being requested by the public. Um, Marguerite?
Yeah.
If you wanna go ahead and read the emails?
Absolutely, and and there are also a few additional Facebook comments, would you like me to read those as well or?
Let's go ahead and take the Facebook comments, um we'll get through the emails. Once we are through the emails, um unless there are additional comments online, because there is a delay to the online. Uh, this is gonna be the final public comment at this time if that's agreeable to everybody. Okay?
Okay, so Laura Spencer on Facebook states, I have three children in the community and I am not concerned at all with my children being affected by adults buying cannabis. Amy Louise Morse states, I feel like a lot of you are uneducated on marijuana, the use. The strands and outcome, I don't see a difference here between recreational and prescribed, anyone can acquire a script. I feel like as a community, you need to educate yourself better on all of this, there is different strands and methods. And Lauren Spencer states, my son was offered it at school numerous times at the high school by other children. And Amy Louise Morse also states, the kids buy it off Snapchat and other social platforms, last overdose of a child, I believe the gummies were acquired. From Roseville, not Colfax. And Carolyn Glenn Preston states, prescription medication prescribed by doctors harm. And Lauren Spencer also states alcohol harms and that is all for Facebook. Um, I'll put the comments on the slide as I read them. The first is from Frank Benilio. He states, me, I live and run a business based out of Colfax, California. Myself and my wife have degrees in law and I have been a medical marijuana patient for many years. Not allowing recreational cannabis sales in Colfax is foolish. People are going to get cannabis whether or not it is permitted to be sold locally. Not allowing cannabis sales in Colfax is going to make people drive further away or procure in a manner which isn't safe, regulated or taxed. Business should be kept local so the money stays in our town, we can presumably benefit from some taxes or fees. More citizens can save fuel and time consuming legal products of their choice. If Colfax decides to continue to prohibit recreational cannabis sales, I propose we prohibit alcohol sales, prohibit pharmaceutical drug sales. Prohibit men and women to show any skin other than their their face and hands. Require the wearing of formal clothes at all times and impose a strict curfew whereby all persons shall be inside by sundown. And how shades shall be drawn tight, sincerely concerned citizen. Next comment is from Tom Parnon. I am for allowing our local cannabis dispensary to sell for adult use. This will keep the tax revenue in town and will discourage black market sales. Next is from Howard White, dear mayor and city council, thank you for making the logical and professional. Decision to treat a local business owner with dignity and hear out his requests regarding his business. I hope he will support this request and vote yes, I would rather have a local business owner and community resident. Benefit from the local revenue than non-local delivery companies who don't care about Colfax or our people. It is my opinion that refusing to allow them to sell something to adults that is already legal and available for sale here is no more than a way for the council to save face and pat themselves on the back. I have confidence that our current sitting council will prioritize enacting fair logically policy over concerns. That voting in an unpopular way may make it harder to get reelected, thank you for your time. Howard White, Oak Ridge Drive. Next, we have a comment from Jamie. To whom it may concern, I am in favor of allowing adult use license for cannabis use in Colfax, California. Next, we have a comment from JD Thomason. To whom it may concern, I am in favor of allowing the adult use license for cannabis use in Colfax, California. Thank you JD Thomason, resident Colfax, California since two thousand and eleven. And next we have a comment from Char Baker. I'm in favor of allowing the Colfax cannabis store to get their adult use license, my name is Charlene Baker and I'm a resident of Colfax, California, thank you for your time. Next, we have a comment from Lauren Bowen. My name is Lauren Murphy Bowen and I'm a homeowner in Colfax and a mother of four. I wanted to write and to show support in favor of adult use cannabis license here in Colfax, thank you. Next, we have a comment from Donna Dean, to whom it may concern, I am for allowing adult use sales of cannabis at Golden State Patient Care. There are numerous reasons why this would be beneficial, but one of the main ones to me is that there are many people who use it medicinally. But are not able to purchase a recommendation due to their finances, thank you for your consideration. Next, we have a comment from Brian Noble. To whom it may concern, I would like to voice my support for the city's approval of recreational cannabis sale by GSPC. Currently, those that wish to purchase and do not have a medical prescription either need to travel to Grass Valley or down the hill to make their purchases. By not allowing recreational sales, this takes away a tax and license revenue stream that could be available to the city. Please support and approve GSPC to allow recreational sale to adults, thank you, Brian Noble, thirty three Gear Heart Lane, Colfax. Next, we have a comment from Sarah Gaines. I would love it if the dispensary in Colfax would also include adult recreational use of marijuana sales. And not be limited to medicinal use only, I have lived in Colfax my entire life, thirty plus years, I love our community and would love to shop and support our local dispensary. Thank you for your time, Sarah Farrow. And next we have a comment from Chris Slack. Hello, I don't live in town, but I do have a Colfax address and consider myself part of the community. I'm in favor of our local dispensary selling to all adults over twenty one regardless of having a medical card or not. I had a card for years and we all know it's easy to get one. It's just an unnecessary loop to jump through now that statewide is legal for adults over twenty one. I drive to Sacramento and buy my edibles there because I no longer have a medical card. It's ridiculous that my local dispensary can't sell to everyone of age, I vote yes on my eight. Chris Slack, ten thirteen, well, I wrote in Colfax. Next, we have a comment from Patrick Dietz. Hi, my name is Patrick Dietz, I am a Navy vet who bought my house in Colfax two years ago and love our small town. I could not attend the meeting today because of my work schedule, thank you in advance for hearing me out. So in defense of allowing this, we can have like three bars, but no place to get weed. Much more trouble comes from bars than dispensers. Look, I'm not arguing that this is some great miracle drug like some do. And for some it truly is, just look to those with high anxiety or people who get frequent seizures. As far as I'm aware, I have yet to see or hear anyone getting violent because they got high on weed. I don't care if domestic violence because they are high either. Anyone getting violent because they got high on weed. About the only thing people seem to destroy is a fridge and yet those happen almost every weekend with alcohol. And alcohol is often the direct reason for violence, the times are changing and are going to be the small town that blocks anything we don't know. Pot makes you lazy and chill, some do get anxiety, but most of the time it makes people anxious because it makes you think. And often there's an imbalance in your life, you're ignoring so thinking about it makes you anxious. If that's the case, just don't purchase or smoke it, problem solved. So if you want to ban pot from being sold. To people like myself, do you want to ban the bars too then? Because if not, you're being hypocritical. I'm not for banning bars or weed, I'm not much for banning anything legal. Living is dangerous and that's the American way, our forefather. Risk their own lives and their family's lives to bring freedom to the individual, freedom is always dangerous. We can't nerf the world, each person is entitled to the right to choose what's best for them, even if it's not what's best for them. If you are an adult, you make your own choice like America intended, I say let it in. It would be nice to have more money come to town, if we deny it, people will still get it as it's legal. And many other cities do sell it, so it won't stop people from getting it, it will stop our town from receiving more money. Through taxes though and customers in the greater area that would come here now because of closer location. Not to mention, I'm sure people here would also visit other stores on occasion, adding to our small town economy. All stopping it would do is cost us money and make the locals have to continue to commute further. I vote yes in allowing our local shop to sell marijuana recreational, thank you for your time, Patrick Dietz.
Go ahead. At this time, um as we're going through the rest of these, I think it would be wise for us to go and. At this time, um, as we're going through the rest of these, I think it would be wise for us to go and put Patient respectful and, you know, listening through all the comments and giving everybody their time to speak their piece. It's I think really important that we go through this exercise and everybody gets their opportunity to have their moment at the podium. So thanks, everybody for cooperating and being respectful. Alright, let's go ahead and resume public comments.
Okay, next we have Sonia Keller. She states, I am sending this email in support of expanding the scope of her merciful cannabis licenses to include and authorize adult-use cannabis retail sales in the city of Coolfax. I live in the city of Coolfax Town Limits in the same vicinity of the existing medical dispensary. I have not experienced any negative impact from the existing cannabis business and drive by the business daily. The existing business owners of Golden State Patient Care run a professional business, contribute to the community and provide alternative medical treatment to patients in need. I do not believe that the addition of adult-use cannabis without a medical prescription will negatively impact existing cannabis businesses or community. Those that choose recreational cannabis will continue to do so. I live in a city lot and would prefer my neighbors have an option to purchase from an approved business versus growing their own cannabis on a small city lot. And causing their surrounding neighbors to smell the grow, even if they find it offensive. Also, private grows entice theft on private property and the risk for violence. I would rather a recreational user purchase from a reputable business versus an illegal grow or business. If approved, the additional business might provide some additional tax revenue which is needed to repair and maintain the aging asphalt in the city limits. In closing, I support the existing cannabis business, Golden State Patient Care, and expanding the current city of Coolfax ordinance to include adult-use cannabis retail sales. But to be clear, I am not in favor of allowing an infiltration of cannabis businesses in the city of Coolfax as has been approved for gas stations in the city limit. Sonia Conklin, two-two-five Vista Avenue. Next, we have a comment from Carrie Conyers. She states, I, good morning, I am in favor of adult sales. I spend many dollars a month on it. It would be nice if the taxes and fees I pay would go to our city. The D E O Ns have proved through the years that they know what they are doing. Many years ago, I used them when I had cancer and a medical card. But for the last ten years, I have chosen to not renew my medical card for fear of losing my gun rights, which in turn means I can no longer go into the store and have been forced to buy delivery that supports other communities. I'm unable to grow myself this year. Thank you. And next, we just have a comment from Nick Deon stating a poll that was stated on Facebook with three hundred and sixty votes for yes, I support allowing the existing cannabis dispensary to sell cannabis to adults twenty-one and over without requiring a doctor's medical recommendation. Thirteen votes for I am against all sales of cannabis entirely. And nine votes for those, these response options do not accurately reflect my opinion on this subject. Next, we have a comment. Let me catch up here. Here we have a comment from Stephanie Dickinson. My name is Stephanie Dickinson and I live in Coolfax. I'm in favor of adult recreational use of cannabis. And then we have a comment from, two comments here. First one is, good morning, near birth. I would like to submit to public comments for night A. I fully support allowing G S P C to expand sales to include adult recreational use. G S P C has been part of our community for twenty years and to my knowledge, they have never had a problem with P C S O. Our town desperately needs the revenue that will be generated from the expanded customer base. I feel the city's role should be to support our local businesses and I very much appreciate you being open to hear that item. As past councils and the city attorney have stonewalled many attempts to even hold a conversation, I also support having conversations about allowing more than one dispensary in town. I urge you to vote in favor of allowing G S P C to sell adult recreational use. And that is from Carrie Taylor Yankee Gems wrote in Coolfax. And then there's another comment submitted by Jeff Wheeler, Main Street Coolfax. I support G S P C to expand their sales to include adult recreational use. The city needs the revenue. I also support a discussion about more than one dispensary. We have a comment from Dirk Gifford. Dear Coolfax City Council, my name is Dirk Gifford. I live in the Mint Creek neighborhood of Coolfax. For the past decade, I have taught school mostly as a substitute teacher and mostly at Coolfax High School. I love the students and I'm concerned that expanding cannabis production, sales and Coolfax will affect our teenagers and young adults as well as adults. The availability of recreational or adult-use cannabis will mean more teenagers and young adults will have access to it, even though it's not legal for them to consume it. As both a parent and educator, I am concerned about the negative effects of recreational cannabis sales in our community. Please do not expand cannabis production, sales and Coolfax. Please don't make Coolfax a destination for recreational non-medicinal cannabis sales. Thank you, Dirk Gifford, two-one-four Treasure Chins Street. We have another comment from Alexandria Kabricky. This states, hello, I hope this email finds you well. I would like to express my opinion ahead of tonight's city council meeting. My opinion is as follows. I believe that with my whole heart, that adult-use cannabis should be allowed in the city of Coolfax in surrounding unincorporated areas. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion, Alexandria Markston. And we have another comment. This one is going to be from Alexandria Vogel. I would like to express my opinion as I'm not able to attend. My opinion is as follows. I believe that adult-use cannabis should be allowed to be sold and delivered in the city of Coolfax in surrounding unincorporated areas. I have grown up here, went to Coolfax Elementary, Coolfax High School. Currently, live in Coolfax and operate my business in Coolfax. We have a comment from Scott Perry. I'm in favor of adult cannabis sales in Coolfax. I'm a twenty-year NorCal resident and cannabis keeps me out of pain, helps me sleep, keeps me calm, and helps me get off of opiate medicine. We have a comment from George Anthony Kofed. States that he's lived in Coolfax for four years. We only need to remember one thing. Possession and use of cannabis for recreational purposes is completely legal in this state. Therefore, its sale should be treated the same as any other substance legally available to the public, such as alcohol, tobacco, vape cups, et cetera. To not allow this would be a blatant discrimination. Thank you for your time and consideration. We have a comment from Diamond Anno. My partner and I own a home in Neymar. I am in favor of adult cannabis use in Coolfax for medical and recreational purposes. The tax revenue the city would gain will be beneficial. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment is from Ruth Conger. Hi Trinity and all, I am an older adult and I am against selling cannabis to anyone for recreational use. I've seen too many friends and family members with addictions to support recreational drugs. As role models for our younger generations, we can do better than this. Thank you, Ruth Conger. We have another comment. This one is going to be from Dale Bridges. To the members of Coolfax City Council, tonight would be a very important meeting to hopefully allow the adult-use license to the D E O N family who are long-term residents of Coolfax. They have a dispensary business, G S P C, at two-three-three Highway one-seventy-four. And they have operated this business with great pride and safety for many years. This would be a wonderful time for extra sales tax revenue to be generated for the city by allowing this business to expand its operation into the adult-use arena. Your yes vote can make this happen. I truly believe that an approval of their requested adult-use license would be a great benefit to the city of Coolfax, G S P C, and the community in general. I have a business location at three-zero-one Highway one-seventy-four in Coolfax, and I live in Dutch Flap. I look forward to your yes vote for this important agenda item. Thank you for allowing me to have input into the council's decision. And then we have a comment from Michael Casti. States, I favor allowing recreational cannabis sales in Coolfax. Next, we have a comment from Susan King. To whom it may concern, I hope this email finds you well. I would like to express my opinion ahead of tonight's city council meeting, but I will be unable to attend. My opinion is as follows. I believe that adult use cannabis should be allowed to be sold and delivered in the city of Coolfax and surrounding unincorporated areas. I have lived in Coolfax and surrounding areas since nineteen ninety-eight and raised my children here. I'm exploring using cannabis to help control my rheumatoid arthritis pain and don't want the cost and hassle of dealing with a medical use card. I'm a law-abiding adult and see no problem with adults responsibly using cannabis. Thank you for, thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion. Sincerely, Susan King. We have a comment from Rob Castillo. Hi, my name is Robert Castillo. I'm a Coolfax resident, homeowner twenty years. I'm in favor of the topic for tonight's meeting, item nine A. Next, we have a comment from Jordan Kubat Photography. Hello, I am a resident of Coolfax and wanted to voice my support for allowing adult recreational cannabis. Many people currently have to go to Auburn to get it delivered by service, and that deprives the city of gaining valuable tax money as well as losing customers for other businesses in town. Allowing the dispensary in town to sell recreational cannabis would create a boon for the local economy because people would stop at the shop before going to Tahoe and Nevada. Coolfax would be a regular stop for so many people. If we continue to not allow recreational cannabis, other towns will reap the benefits and steal away opportunities here in Coolfax. Let's get with the times. Thank you, Jordan. Next, we have a comment from Amy Tabbick. I'm a resident of Coolfax. Here are my current thoughts towards the issue. One, any argument made against cannabis can be made against alcohol. I don't think it's fair to distinguish one as fine and acceptable and one as dangerous or a menace. Two, I would be very surprised if people against cannabis sales use or active users of the plant, as many studies show negative side effects. Not very many, and the ones that do are usually talking about underage teenage users. There are even more studies suggesting the opposite is actually the case. Three, I use cannabis as a sleep aid and pain reliever. I would love to give my money to a local store right in my city instead of ordering from out of town or driving long distances to stock up. Four, I understand that it is legal on a federal, it is illegal on a federal level. Not everything that is deemed illegal is bad and not everything deemed legal is good. Context and individual judgment is a major value to me. It is the user that creates their own experience with substances and situations, and adults twenty-one and over should be able to make that decision for themselves. Five, perhaps if the cannabis store was allowed to sell to adults twenty-one and over for recreational use, the pizza store next door wouldn't have gone out of business. Coolfax resident Amy Kubat. Next, we have a comment from Tessa Benamalo. I believe we need recreational use of cannabis in Coolfax. We have a comment from Chris Elliott. I'm in support of adult-use marijuana for multiple reasons. One of which is because the legalized sales come from legal cannabis-growing operations. This means the environment is protected and also that citizens know what they are buying, such as THC, CBD percentage and product. Also voting for this will increase tax revenues. Thank you, Christian Elliott, for your resub. Next, we have a comment from Nicole Abby. I'm in favor of Coolfax having a recreational cannabis store. Every adult should have a choice to re- obtain it from a medicinal personal use. I'm a lifelong resident of Coolfax and I fully support in favor of recreational cannabis. And they also state, this is from the Facebook quote below, in the comment I submitted, as a nurse who had patients that I gave medical marijuana to, a pill called Marinol, so that they'd eat meals and calm their Parkinson's symptoms along with other health issues. I've watched this drug do miracles instead of Haldor or Loazepam. This is a natural medication. I was in a lockdown unit as a nurse and I'd rather my patients have this medication instead of others with worse side effects. Nikki Abby. We have a comment from Tim Carlson. Hello, my name is Tim Carlson. I've lived in Coolfax for almost seven years. I'm in favor of turning the local medical dispensary into a recreational dispensary for twenty-one and over usage. Thank you, Tim Carlson. We have a comment from Dee Woody. I think the city could use the tax dollars from medical marijuana store. I would support the approval of the license to sell to all legal marijuana users. Thank you, David Woodford, longtime city resident. And then a comment from Tracy Vogel. Good morning, I would like to express my opinion ahead of tonight's city council meeting, but I will be unable to attend. My opinion is as follows. I believe that adult-use cannabis should be allowed to be sold and delivered in the city of Coolfax in surrounding unincorporated areas. I have lived here for twenty-four years and currently live in Coolfax, nine-five-seven-one-three, and operate my business in Coolfax. Thank you. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. Wish you a joyful. And then we have a comment from John Patrick. Yes, I support allowing the existing cannabis dispensary to sell cannabis to adults twenty-one over without requiring a doctor's medical recommendation. The comment from Tracy Watson. My name is Tracy Jojo. I've lived here in Coolfax since June of nineteen ninety-six. Let me start off by saying we have the most wonderful town and wonderful caring people in it. I'm one hundred percent in favor of G S P C getting their adult-use license. A lot of people like me that have medical issues and have very limited income cannot afford to get a doctor's recommendation. When it comes down to it, we use the little money we have and are forced to go to Nevada City where you don't need a recommendation, which also means the taxes we pay on any product, type of products there benefits Nevada City and not Coolfax. It makes me really sad that so many of us cannot support a wonderful local business and are forced to go elsewhere. Please give them their adult-use license. So we are allowed to get our medicine locally, support a small business and with taxes support our beautiful Coolfax. Thank you. Sincerely, Tracy Jojo. We have a comment from Teresa Herrera. Yes, I support allowing the existing cannabis dispensary to sell cannabis to adults over twenty-one without a medical recommendation. I am a resident of Coolfax, California. We have a comment from Suzie Springer. Yes, is my vote for the Golden Patient Collective Services in Coolfax, California, to have adult cannabis. I'm a worker in Coolfax, but from Meadow Vista. We have a comment from Sarah Murphy. Unfortunately, will not be able to attend the city council meeting tonight. My opinion is as follows. I believe that the recreational adult twenty-one and older use cannabis should be allowed to be sold and delivered in the city of Coolfax and surrounding unincorporated areas. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion. Sarah Murphy, resident of Coolfax for twenty years. And then, uh, this is the last note. We have two more. Uh, it's going to be from John Riga, CEO of Medicus Industries located on New Mohawk Road in Nevada City. I'm writing you today to inform you of a matter affecting one of your community businesses, Golden State Patient Care. Over the past year or two, we have received an increasing number of calls from people located in and around Coolfax wanting to purchase our medical and adult-use cannabis products from G S P C. Only be, only to be turned away because the customer did not possess a medical marijuana card. Just last week, we received three such calls explaining the situation at G S P C and wanting to know where they can purchase our products. We directed these individuals to elevation dispensary located in Nevada City and retailers in Sacramento County. I spoke with the owners of G S P C who informed me the city has denied issuing them an adult-use license. It seems to me the inequity placed upon G S P C, not to mention the consumers in Coolfax, is illogical. But G S P C not being able to sell cannabis products under the regulations of adult use not only limits G S P C, it causes consumers located in and around Coolfax to travel to a distant location, adding time and cost to obtain the cannabis products they want to purchase. It is a statistical fact that the vast majority of medicinal and adult-use cannabis consumers do not possess a medicine, a medicinal cannabis card. Consumers that need medicinal cannabis products or which wish to purchase adult-use cannabis products are forced to go outside of the city of Coolfax and then return with their exact same products that could have been purchased in Coolfax if G S P C is granted an adult-use license. In addition, not only is the city of Coolfax not collecting substantial tax revenue from consumers, the city of Coolfax is also missing out on the tax revenue generated by G S P C. Beyond the above, who knows what the environmental impact is with fuel and other such items needed to travel to Nevada City or Sacramento? Not to mention the potential catastrophic impact on the community if an automobile accident were to occur during such travel. There are some of my thoughts I believe you and the city council may want to consider when deciding on whether or not to issue an adult-use license to G S P C. Thank you for your time. Please feel free to reach out to me by phone or email with questions or comments. I'm happy to schedule a time to meet to discuss any of the above or cannabis industry in general. Respectfully submitted, John. And the last comment is from Alexis McKelvey. And she states, to whom it may concern, ahead of tonight's city council meeting, I would like to express my support for G S P C and Coolfax. I strongly support their request to be an offer of adult-use cannabis sales without a medical recommendation. Cannabis and its therapeutic properties have helped me immensely, as well as helped many friends, family members and community members. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Alexis McKelvey. There are two comments on one email. Yes, and then there were two that were received after four o'clock. And they were direct. Okay.
Oh, I apologize. I was speaking without my mic on that whole time. Um, so for the listeners online, we're going to go ahead and retrieve the emails that came in after the four o'clock cutoff just to make sure that we're being fair and inclusive. And once we go ahead and get those, um, read to everybody, uh, listening, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion.
Okay, from. Sorry about that. From Nicola Del Pino. She says, I'm writing on behalf of my tenant, Jim Dion, in support of the city. Using adult use permit, Jim and his family were tenants of my father for 10 years. And they have been my tenants for the past five years, so I can say with authority that I know them well. They're excellent tenants, honest, reliable, upfront in all of their practices, and I feel very fortunate to do business with them. I believe that it is in the best interest of the city and community to issue this permit because we all benefit through taxation and knowing that the products sold are safe, tested and reputable. This also allows my tenants to compete in the market in a fair and legal way and sell medicinal products to those who desperately need them at a reasonable and affordable cost. Obviously, as a landlord, I also benefit because my tenants will be able to remain and continue their longstanding business. This is a win-win for all. Thank you, Nicola Del Pino. And then we have a comment from Nicole Norris. I would like to voice my strong opinion opposed to bringing more marijuana or loosening regulation. I am a homeowner, mother and production working member of society. And if we want to attract the like to our. We must oppose any effort to encourage marijuana. Please confirm your receipt of this email, and I understand there's a council meeting tonight to discuss. And then we have a comment from Melissa Bellis. Ahead of tonight's city council meeting, I would like to express my support for GSPC in Corfax. Ahead of tonight's city council meeting, I would like to express my support for GSPC in Corfax. I strongly support their request to begin offering adult use cannabis sales without a medical recommendation. Cannabis and its therapeutic properties have helped me immensely, as well as helped many friends, family members and community members. Currently, I have my recreational marijuana delivered to my house from companies outside of Corfax or I drive to Sacramento or Nevada City. All those tax dollars are going to outside counties. I'd rather see those tax dollars being used in my community of Corfax. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Melissa Bellis. And then we have a comment from Suzie Springer. I'm a Meadow Vista resident and I'm all for this to happen. My vote is yes. Thank you. We have a comment from Philip Chalmers. Greetings. We've been residents of Corfax for over seven years. And we, as adults over the age of 21, would appreciate the Corfax City Council's approval of adult use sales at the local cannabis dispensary. We're tired of driving to Nevada City to give them our tax dollars, and we would rather support our local businesses. Please approve this application and make Corfax cool again. Respectfully, Kelly and Philip Chalmers. And sorry, there's been more comments since four o'clock. Um, and then another is another email from Pam Simpson for. I'm a Corfax resident and I support the expansion of GSPC to include recreational cannabis. From Julian Oster, I am emailing to show my full support of having recreational cannabis sales in Corfax. I hope you will vote yes on any. Thank you, Julian Oster. And that is all for the emails.
Great, thank you. We did say we would take a last call on social media and Zoom. Are we tapped out? Did we get everything already read?
We do have several more Facebook comments.
How many is several?
Looks like six.
Okay, we will read those six.
Okay. Carolyn Glenn Preston states, I would much rather see our son who passed away from fentanyl use marijuana. Abigail Cornelius says, I support the refusal to open a cannabis dispensary in Corfax. And Lauren Spencer states, there's already a dispensary open in Corfax. That's a question. Caroline Glenn Preston states, my husband and I would like to say we support the dispensary and would like to see the expansion of their business into adult use cannabis retail.
Is that it? That's not back and forth dialogue? Cause I wanna make sure that we're.
Right, I'm skipping the back and forth dialogue.
Okay, cause it should really only be one public comment per person, uh, to be fair.
Okay, so it looks like. Uh, one other comment from Cassia Jade Parham. Most of the Lamar personnel are against cannabis usage. My doctor who left the practice was not. She does not live or work there anymore due to their beliefs not matching. Sad too many are too strict with cannabis usage. When an officer would rather pull up on a marijuana shared concern than any other illegal substance usage happening. Nathan Crabtree states, I'm a resident of Corfax and I am not in support of the cannabis dispensary. And Rhonda Shatford Swenson states, I wish to voice my opinion that I am against the use and dispensing of cannabis, must be. And Cheyenne Baldwin states, I am a resident of Corfax and I support GSPC expansion. And Shiloh Howard, this is the last comment. As a local student, I am not in favor of cannabis dispensary in Corfax.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to the council for discussion. And everybody's a little bit fatigued, uh, but I appreciate everyone hanging in. So does anybody have thoughts? Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna ask everyone to, let's come on back to our seats. And, uh, we're gonna open the open session back up. Um, as we know, the public comment portion is now closed for this item, and we are back at council discussion. Who wants to get started? Okay.
Better start. So, um, kind of the key reasons that we heard on both sides of the issue today was one is revenue, but to me, revenue is not an issue. So if that's a decision point, I would say take revenue off the table. The second issue we heard is it's legal in California, the fact that something's legal in California and illegal at the federal level is another one that's off the table for me. Right? Um, the next one we heard was a lot of medical comments. When you listen, a lot of people are talking about medical issues. This is not a discussion tonight over the medical portion of this. Medical portion was approved years ago. That one's we're not talking about tonight. We're only talking about the adult use piece. There are all of the ones that are in favor of it from a medical standpoint, or I don't wanna get a medical card, but I have a medical problem. My view is those kinda come off the table. They're not really for it. They're just either they have a medical issue, which means they can get it, or they need to get a medical card, in which case they can get it. So that, to me, looks like that's a separate group by themselves. Um, it was very interesting with the gentleman in the back there talking about the long-term damage. I read a number of articles on that that talks about a frontal lobe damage and all. And, uh, that to me is a serious issue that we gotta address. Uh, it's not a question of cannabis versus alcohol. Alcohol is something that's been there forever. We're not talking about adding alcohol. We're not talking about removing alcohol. We're talking about a whole new stream of stuff coming in. So I just wanna separate the alcohol issue out entirely. Um, the, the, the number one thing that kinda sticks in his mind is if I had a son or a daughter here, how would I explain to them it's okay for us to have an adult use facility here that doesn't have a medical need? Uh, and that's okay, but and it's okay for adults in Corfax to buy this stuff from the facility, but you shouldn't use it. Right? So I struggle with that balance in there. So my, my position, I think, is very simple. I would oppose this.
Someone else wanna share some input?
Well, at the last meeting, I asked just to learn more about things. And, uh, so I appreciate all the public comments and, and this hearing both sides. I actually have questions. I didn't know we're jumping right into like a yes, no.
If we have questions and we need to get some clarity, I am totally open to us getting some clarity. I just wanna make sure that we're maintaining a respectful dialogue and we're keeping, you know, some structure to the meeting so that everybody feels their time is respected. So, but, but if you have questions, we can definitely have them addressed.
Okay, uh, in no particular order, just some notes I took down, if I could read them. Okay, so, uh, question for you guys. Um, so just you, you mentioned like basically quality control, like dispensaries is being regulated, regulated. To what extent, just from my knowledge, you know, footnote version, um, do you guys ensure quality control, um, of your products that you currently sell?
I'm gonna ask you guys, if you're gonna answer, to please come to the podium so that we have the mic for our viewers who are not here in person.
Hello, and thank you. We actually don't manufacture or produce any of the products that we sell. We're not, we don't have that license. Um, everything's tested through the state. The only issues are is if some out-of-town distributor or some other, you know, somebody's being shady and trying to get bootleg black market products that are identical to ones we sell. Um, we visually inspect them and we make sure they're sealed. And that's about all we can do. There's, it's not, it's, that's the state's control, not that I approve of what the state does, cause I don't think they do enough, not even close. And I think they allow too much of some things, but it's all done before it gets to our, our dispensary.
Can, can you just remain up there? I have some.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, with the product, if, if adult use was, was approved, um, how would the products, if at all, differ? Like, as far as what you'd sell for adult use versus the current products?
So adults, you can only purchase 100 milligrams of an edible, edible product. Medical, you can purchase up to 1,000 milligrams. All adult stores don't even abide by that law. They sell, I bought four bottles of 1,000-milligram drops and with my ID. So that's something that's not regulated. They don't have a force to do it. And I honestly don't believe they care too much, honestly, about your individual community as much as they care about the whole state and the revenue. Nobody's ever, nobody's ever bought anything adult used from us. So, but all of our products come from the same places that adult use companies produce. It's supposed to have a label on it. If it's for medical use, it says for medical use only. Um, and basically you're limited to an ounce of cannabis flower a day. If you don't have a, a card, a recommendation, and you can buy up to eight ounces a day if you do have one. So potentially a kid that's 18-year-old could go into a dispensary with their card and buy eight ounces of weed and go sling it to their friends on the street. So that answers your question.
Yeah. I heard, not necessarily from you guys, I don't think, but definitely somewhere within public comment, that basically, you know, this would help treat depression, more so for the short term. But my, my question is, long, for the long run, do you guys believe in general this, this would help, like with things like anxiety, depression, all that stuff for the long run as well? Or is it just a short term? Just wanna get your guys' opinion.
Seems to help my father.
I've been smoking marijuana for 50 years. I think my frontal lobe is pretty intact. I've run several businesses with hundreds of employees. I own two businesses in this town right now. I'm working on a third one. My brain's working fine. Marijuana didn't distract from that. And another thing, our, our products are sealed when we get them and when they leave. And then we also put the product in a bag and seal the bags, so I'm tampering.
Well, can you stay up there, actually? Because I'm gonna skip ahead to a question that you might be able to answer better than sounds. So I'm trying to put my fellow business owner hat on. If I'm in your shoes, I'm just trying to think hypothetically, like, what is, what is a, what is a medicinal card cost roughly, again?
Usually it's between 150, 200 bucks if you go to your doctor. Yeah. I mean, you can get some elsewhere. But we, when we first started, we worked for several doctors, Dr. Bannister, Dr. Barth, who came to our town. Most of you guys know that, but they were not able to get the medicine for their patients. That's why we opened originally.
One of the themes I heard, it's been reoccurring, it's big-time reoccurring, is hey, we're losing out on all this business that's going, like to other counties or Sacramento. Maybe this is an ignorant question. I'll ask it anyways. I mean, to, in, in, in the spirit of trying to retain or not lose or capture some of that lost business, doesn't make sense. Have you guys ever, like, evaluated just the idea of, like, somehow covering that cost? It seems to be a recurring theme that, like, some, some people can't afford the medical card. But I gotta believe that the margins that are made on the sale of these current products, even for just medicinal purposes, like, is to be able to cover that? And, and like, easily, like, make that up, if that makes sense? In other words, yeah, I'm just asking a hypothetical. Yeah. So has that ever been considered?
Mick has some input on this one.
It's not legal. Okay, that, that's, that's what I wanna know.
David, I apologize. I'm a little hard of hearing.
So that's good. And actually, I don't give my mics. Back to the questions. I only have two more.
You know, there's a metric system, that's the state government system, track and trace. They take a UFID tag and put it on the plant as soon as it sprouted. If you take any harvest off that, it gets a package tag. It's tracked and traced. They can read it from space. When we get the products, it's all in track and trace. We have to receive them. So all those products, there's no way to bring any other products in and sell them through our POS cell system, except for through track and trace. It's the metric system. And that's been, it's pretty strict. There's no way.
Yeah.
Like I said, state-tested.
It's all tested. To even get it in the metric system, it has to go through the rigorous testing and all that and pass. And then you can make it into packages. And then we get just the packages after they're already been tested and packaged up. And then we, we receive them after we order them.
Okay. I'll just, one last, one more question for the time being. Revenue, to Joe's point, that seems to be like, like, a theme, like revenue.
Let me get into that a little bit. We gross about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars a year. 30% of that's gobbled up in taxes, at least, you know, and a lot to payroll and stuff. But we pay, I'm not quite sure of the exact number, but over $40,000 in the 4% sales tax that we, the cities imposed on us, which is fine. But we're turning away at least half of the people, okay? Half the people that come to my store, I'm sorry, we can't help you. Well, that's another $40,000 or $50,000 we're throwing away. It's $100,000 just in the 4% tax for Colfax. Not counting the $8,000 I paid for my business license. I don't think anywhere in town is close to that. I pay more tax in this town than anyone. And frankly, I'm kind of treated like a drug dealer, you know, and I'm, I'm not. I'm a compassionate man. I look like family. I mean, we've put our bus on the line. You know, you think we don't get death threats? You know, it comes, you know, and, and so it's not an easy thing. We've done this so perfectly that there's nothing that, that's been done that can stop us. We've got an auditor that we pay $60,000 for five years to come in and make sure. He's been in three or four times. We've got an A-plus every time he came in. We got our stuff together there and he's, you know, helpful, but.
No, I appreciate that.
So it's about $100,000 in the, just the 4%.
Okay. So on the topic of revenue, would you say then roughly, would it be fair to say that if adult use was approved, based upon your numbers, would it like maybe double?
Yeah.
Triple, like a double?
We turn half the people away.
Would, would you say that, like, then that, that revenue, that additional revenue, that a lot of the citizens seem to be concerned with, you know, losing out on, would that exceed the additional costs, in your opinion, like, associated with supporting? Just, just that extra exposure, if you will?
About the same. I don't see any difference in the amount of revenue from, other than it's gonna be a lot more.
Like law enforcement, additional costs with that, staff, whatever.
That's another interesting point. We're going on our 19th year in business in Colfax. Most of it in the same building. We had a little hiatus for four and a half years there, but I still continued my business. Next door, I bought the movie theater, you know? And I didn't do a selling weed out of there. I just provided my patients with their plants so they can have medicine. That's all. I lost my train of thought there.
That's, I mean, that's, thank you. Yeah. Thank you for answering questions. Those are all my questions for now.
Marnie, do you have some questions?
Do I have questions?
Yeah, or do you have any discussion points you wanna hit on, or?
Yeah, I do. Number one, a whole reason why I agreed to doing this, because I wanted to see, like, you know, 2018, that's five years. That's a lot of time that's gone by where people's, you know, public opinion can change, stuff like that. At the end of the day, my role here, oh, I should turn my microphone. As an elected leader of Colfax, my job is to the people within that jurisdiction, so to say. Tonight, we've opened it up to unincorporated area. I just, I don't know how to say this. Because what I'm looking at in here is I'm looking at opposition and support. I don't know if our elders are here. I don't know if their voice is here. How are, they don't have a newspaper to, you know what I mean? I hear a lot of Facebook and, you know, those kinds of things, but was there anything put into the newspaper so that people that read, do we even have a newspaper? I don't even think we have a newspaper, because I remember, I think I looked to do that. Yes, that's what I'm thinking. So yeah, I don't, I believe that they care. I know that for sure.
We, we should definitely make sure that we're restricting public comment to, we're bringing someone up to the podium, because again, we need to
Yes.
be respectful of everyone's time and have meeting structure.
So again, my role as an elected leader is to answer to the people within the city limits, okay? I don't know if that voice is here that I'm looking for, which is the seniors, because I have heard from the faith-based. Well, I guess I've heard from a few seniors, but I'm telling you right now, I know my community, I know what they have to say. And what I'm thinking is, maybe they don't want to come into the public. Number one, maybe they're afraid of pandemic. Number two, maybe they don't wanna say, I'm here to speak. They could be afraid of repercussion. There's so many variables to this. So at this point, I mean, I, I don't think that there's been enough evidence put in front of me to change my vote, but I am open to, I don't know how we would do it. I want to measure the citizen's voice in Colfax, in our jurisdiction. How do we justify, you know, bringing in the unincorporated area to this conversation when we're city representatives?
I'm happy to let you question, but.
That's my question, you know?
Just would add that the polls did really well.
I apologize unless, unless the council, I, I apologize. Unless you specifically ask him.
I'm just like, when I say my question, like, these are things that are going through my head. I've jotted, I've listened to everybody and I appreciate everybody coming in, because this is important. You know, this is, you know, Colfax is a small community and we're all like, you know, intertwined, especially during these emergencies. I really feel like, you know, my jurisdiction needs to come, maybe not in raising their hands, but I really, I can't justifiably put a vote tonight. I'm not ready to vote.
Well, we're not, we're not. I just wanna be clear. There's no official decision, no vote that's officially happening tonight.
Okay, that's good. Um, I, yes, I do wanna hear about your polls, please. And I wanna hear about, you know, I, I seen people come in. I wanna hear from two people tonight. Yeah. Okay, I hear you. Okay, I'm not, I wanna hear him.
Well, what, what is your question?
My question is, you did a poll. What happened with that poll and where was it put to? Was it put to the newspaper or was it put to, you know, a social media?
Did GSPC do a poll?
I'm only going on the poll that I saw on Facebook and.
Oh, okay. And the only poll that I am aware of is the one I put out there to try to solicit the public.
Okay, I was confused.
So, I just wanna be very clear. That is not in any way concrete data that you should be saying these are constituents of our city limits.
No, I'm not.
I did that on purpose to kind of prove a point. I did that to prove a point, because sometimes when we talk about the number of people who came and talked to us about something, we're not really doing a good job of narrowing down who it is we're talking to, or where they live, or whether or not they are a voter or one of our constituents. And, you know, that was a big part of the reason I put it out there, so that those people who really had an interest would take the time to participate in the public process. And as you would see further down on that post, I put all the information to join this meeting. I specifically solicited people to send in comments. I tried to send a private message to every single participant and ask them to send in a comment for tonight, but unfortunately, Facebook thought I was a scammer and shut me down. So, you know, again, with this, I, I totally empathize with, with what you're getting at, Marnie.
Yeah, my, my point to it though, Trinity, my point to it is, you know, when I was doing this, I was trying just to gauge the city of Colfax, but then you said, no, let's hear, because they pay taxes, they.
Well, we're legally required to accept all public testimony that is brought forward.
Okay, that's fine. But I answer to the people of Colfax specifically, the ones that vote for me. And those are the people that I wanna hear in here. I don't know how we, I, I wanna continue this conversation to hear those specific people, because I don't think that what, what has happened tonight is convincing enough to have me change what I know the people are telling me, stand against this. We don't want this. I know those people. I don't see any of those people that have reached out to me, not one. But they're elders. So there's a lot of variables. No, I know, but I'm just saying.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you, I, I'm gonna ask, what you're suggesting, are you suggesting that we take up public polling, official public polling on this?
I don't know how that part is done. I don't know, you know, I wanna spend a little bit of money, but I do wanna reach every single person in my jurisdiction before I make a decision about something like this. With this little money that, to, you know, to be spent on that.
And in the newspaper. Sorry, Jim, I'm sorry. I have to, I, I apologize. The, the rules of order sometimes kind of suck.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I think I understand what you're getting at. Does council have any questions about what Marnie's trying to, you know, talk about?
If we hired an independent pollster to go out and poll all people in the city, there's only about 2,000 people.
Yeah.
Right? You could have an answer to this question in about a month.
Yeah. But how much would something like that cost the city? And I really think that we need to do this.
That might be something that we have to direct staff to bring us the numbers on.
Okay.
I would hate to put staff on the spot right now and say, give me a financial answer on something you haven't bid for.
Yeah.
I don't think that's fair to say.
Yeah, no, I understand that point, but you understand my point of why I cannot.
But it'd have to be a mechanism, it'd have to be a mechanism that's not relying on just like Facebook, because we know that many of the seniors aren't on Facebook.
Yep.
It has to be a thing that's gotta be able to reach everybody independently.
And also vet them.
Yeah, vet them, yeah.
Um, so we haven't heard from Sean yet. Sean, do you have some comments, questions, anything you wanna discuss?
I wouldn't be opposed to pulling out people in the community. And I'm not opposed to bringing discussion back to the table about opening up adult-use licenses. I mean, that's basically what we're supposed to be directing staff on tonight. So we can talk about it again and have more public discussion and see where we wanna go and changing the ordinance and opening up the licenses that are already there.
So, I have a couple of questions. Sean, I'm sorry. I apologize. It sounded like I cut you off there.
Nope, you're good. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, Mick. So can you explain to me why with these out-of-area delivery companies, we are unable to basically have a stick to beat them with when they don't follow the rules?
Yeah, that is, because that is what the law provides. The statute was, my mic's on, right? Can you hear me? The law was written to where the city cannot regulate that. It's regulated solely by the state. Sorry.
I, I just wanna comment on that. I, I have a fundamental, really big problem with that. And I mean, I just wanna comment on how not right I think that is.
I don't think it's fair either, but.
You know, I have a lot of things I could say tonight. I do, I, as much as I, you know, hate to spend additional money on this topic, I think it is important to, with something this incredibly, this is what I'm looking for, non-consensus, to put it nicely. I think that it's extremely important that we pull teeth and try to go the extra mile to make sure that our citizens have had the opportunity to be involved. And we did try to accomplish that here tonight to a certain degree. And I, I just wanna thank everybody who came out and spoke their heart and said what they had to say and shared their opinion. But I would be supportive of Marnie's suggestion to do an official polling through official avenues to make sure that we have data that is independent. Because if we look at our 2016 voting record on this, the numbers were in favor of adult-use cannabis based on a playing field where adult-use cannabis wasn't legal at the time. And it's, it's been several years. And we've had a difference in our constituency since then. We've gotten to see the results of those things since then. The state has changed their rules on us since then, because it used to be that you couldn't just come in here and deliver wherever you wanted, whenever you wanted. That's a new thing.
One other thing to think about is, and Marnie, unless we've decided about two years from now.
I, I don't know, but that's what we. Right. Is that within the confines of what we agreed to?
The agreement was that this was going to be revenue-neutral to the city.
Right.
That's how staff has always interpreted it.
Okay.
Whatever you, whatever you spend goes into the.
If that's council's interpretation here, I'm, I don't see an issue with it, that it should be. Yeah. Why are you having to pay for it? Yeah. No, that makes sense. So. Revenue neutral.
That means if we spend $20,000 to do a survey, $20,000 would be rolled into the cost of the license. Amortized it for so many years.
Okay.
Okay, well, that wasn't what I was trying to achieve here. I'm trying to achieve hearing the voices of the jurisdiction. So what is another way that we can get to that?
What, without spending money?
Solution.
I don't know that there is a way without spending money.
Really, the only way to do it is to poll.
I, I'd like to hear, what does the rest of the council think about the concept of polling the community? I, Sean, I know you were supportive initially. David, what are your thoughts?
I think that's a, in this respect, a waste of time.
No disrespect, it was a waste of time and money.
Okay.
I already have a good pulse on looking at the things, I don't, I I personally. Don't, would would hate to see our staff and our city and our monies and the citizens' money tied up with doing that. My opinion.
That's fair.
Sean, what are your thoughts?
I'm not opposed to doing the polling if people want more information, um, but I'm not opposed to just bringing the issue back to. Another meeting to have more discussion on whether or not we wanna change ordinance. Without the polling.
So.
I have four things, so I try to go myself in your guys' shoes.
Yeah.
Like. If I'm in their shoes, I definitely wanna walk away from this meeting.
Yeah.
Not like having another meeting, another meeting, like like getting a good feel for like what direction are they going into. Like, to include more expenses and more time being spent. Um, on this topic, um, I, again, I know I'm the new kid on the water, but I understand that it's a long, uplifting topic. That's why at the last meeting, I simply asked, like, hey, I just wanna hear both sides, and so, yeah, thank you. Um, so, yeah, um, so I do hope that there is, that we can arrive at some sort of just solid polls. As far as it went, not we're gonna go forward with considering adult use versus not. Um, after we've asked all the questions and clarified things, my opinion.
Okay. So I'm just gonna say where I sit right now, where I sit right now. Is I am open to bringing this forward for a uh potential change of our ordinance, that is where I sit right now. What I would be open to doing is during that meeting in consideration of changing the ordinance. And making sure that we are on the same page, that there are no additional ordinance changes that need to come. Subsequent to an ordinance change, if it is agreed upon, again, I'm not assuming it's agreed upon. In the meantime, I think that would give council the opportunity to do extensive public outreach. And I think it's our responsibility as council members to do that, so I I'd like to know council's thought on that.
Well, I have a question, it's more towards the city, I guess, that just came to mind, um. So, just remind me, and especially if we open it up to like adult use. Why would we only consider, and and there's no disrespect to you guys, but just one company? Or is it like, like, I mean, does this open up the floodgates for other applicants as well and then? Is that defeat the purpose, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, like.
You you can do it either way from from staff's perspective, if you're going to open it up, you open it up to everybody. And let, and the last time we we did something like this, with with the with the exception of the medicinal cannabis license. Last time we did this, we opened it up for e- everybody to apply, that's how fireworks farms came along, being the, getting the cultivation permit. So.
So be clear on that, that was only for the non-retail. Last time we opened it up, council directed staff to issue one license. For the medicinal, the previous is what we have going on today.
Yeah.
Um, in all fairness, I have received three emails from competitors for the adult use since this topic has been re-agendized.
But I I thought so, I thought we had three or four applicants and the council stopped the process and then decided to do the single medicinal.
So for background, um, before we revisited our ordinance and rewrote the entire thing. The previous council, when Sean, Joe and myself were elected. Had brought forward an ordinance that would allow four retail dispensaries within the city limits. And there were applicants to apply for each of those licenses. When we came onto council, the new council saw several issues with that on multiple levels and we said we need to go back to the drawing board. And we need to write a comprehensive ordinance that addresses the issue of cannabis as a whole, not as just a retail. And in that discussion, because retail was so incredibly popular and we didn't have a control over it and we didn't know what we were dealing with. In order to be fair, we decided to run a pilot program. And in that pilot program, we allowed one single retail license. And it was grandfathered under the existing dispensary and under their existing classification as medical only. And so, during that process, we made the decision to maintain, for the time being, a single license for retail. Due to our total population count and all that, within our district. Um, but we allowed two other licenses for each additional category. And that's where we sit today.
Several times, fair business practices, and I decided to ask the question, like, I mean, like, uh, no matter what, which stretch we go into.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, would would we limit it again to just like one? If we approve adult use down the road, is just one company get it, like, to open it up, I mean, and then how do we? I I just, just asking.
And I feel like that's a another discussion worthy of having. Um, but I feel like it's not what we brought people here tonight to speak on, so I feel like a lot of people missed their opportunity to maybe voice their opinion on that. Specific side of it. Um, because people might not share the same, I I did see that in a couple of the comments, you know, people said, I I'm okay with adult use, but I'm not okay with anymore or. I'm okay with more if we do adult use, you know, there was a lot of variations there, um. So I would treat it separate.
I agree.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, there's so much.
At the end of the day, we are elected by our community to make decisions on behalf of our community and at the end of the day. We are going to be forced sometimes to make decisions without receiving input from every single voter. That's our job, that's what we were elected to do.
I mean, so. So, um, so when I, to your point, to tag on what you just said, when I was elected, in my mind, um. I felt like, uh, I inherited the responsibility, the burden, whatever, I mean, but the responsibility of ensuring safety for the community.
Yeah.
To me, and you've heard me say this before, safety is number one.
Yep.
It is tough for me in my mind, even though I am open to the idea of of adult use and then using. Products, et cetera. When you have an overwhelming opinion from our law enforcement, very same law enforcement that like protects us, it's already very, very thin. Not only just on budget, but also just on staff, basically, I'll show up and 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 say. Don't do this, for the reasons that are here. It's tough for me to go against that grain, in 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 my opinion, and 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 for me, it's safety. Um, it's nothing against business, uh, I understand, I understand you guys will, that's not really a question, okay, just comment. It just, for me, I mean, it's, that's that's difficult to go against that, um. Uh, you know, just one last comment on this, I heard revenue versus cost. Uh, I got a feel for revenue and I'm just, I'm just putting on my common sense hat, that I have a business hat on. In my opinion, in general, maybe I'm stating the obvious. If we approve adult use, we will, we will enhance, increase exposure to just. It being more easily available, I think we all agree with that. And I'm gonna say this generically, when it is more easily available in our community, as I, as I, as I think of safety. It's gonna increase the chances of accidents and stuff like that, and to me, and I know this is probably maybe generically put. Uh, and you know, and I I have personal experience, everybody too, as well, all it takes is one life. It just nullifies whatever revenue, like, we're gonna make off of this, in my opinion, like, whether it's a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. You can tell me a million, that like is bringing the city, and I would say this lightly, if I lose votes, kill, then die. But I mean, like, uh, but all it takes is one life. You know, um, and then nullifies everything. So, if if the goal tonight is to to gauge. Council, as far as like where we stand, and out of respect for you guys, who obviously this has been lingering on and on and on, where you stand. Um, and I apologize for that, that's taken like this long. If if someone's holding gun in my head saying, hey, where do you stand, Dave? It it'd be no, uh, I would not be in favor of 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 approving adult use, primarily for that reason.
Yeah.
Um, and I hope people can appreciate that, whether they agree, whether or not, just the safety, this, I mean, just.
Yeah, no, I, I I I totally appreciate where you're coming from and I think I come in with a different perspective here, but I. I am, I'm gonna agree with you really strongly on the one life thing. And my issue on that is when we're talking about cannabis and its accessibility and where it's coming from. My big gripe that I have brought to the table since day one is the black market. That's my big, huge gripe, is, you know, like we heard from the sheriff's department, it just totally destroys our environment. It has huge issues with human trafficking and other, you know, unintended consequences that come. I should say, they are intended, they don't care, people are disposable to the black market. And that sort of industry and the cartels and the things that happen. And it's disgusting and I have a huge issue with it and. When I know that kids, and this this hits very personal to me without me sharing too much personal information. But when kids have access to what's out there on the black market. To weed that isn't regulated and that is laced with things like fentanyl, that causes. Issues like drug-induced psychosis. I, I can't stand here and say that I'm happy with myself. If I don't take a stand against that, and for me, taking a stand against that is putting on. My big pants, stepping up to the plate, doing the job that I feel that I was elected to do and regulate it. Because the state, whether we like it or not, decided that they get to have anybody they want come into our borders and sell it. And, you know.
That that was a simplistic answer, that's the bottom line, because it gets into a very, very delicate zoning question, which I didn't wanna delve into.
And and I totally understand that, but getting into, again, you know, I don't wanna share too many personal details of other people's lives. But when I see a delivery car come riding up to, you know, someone's house who's close to me. To deliver to somebody who's supposed to be applying for a job. To me, that's very, very frustrating that they get to come in here and they get to do those things, you know, and. And we could certainly do that. But regardless of if we did that, the end of my position here is that. I have a big problem with the black market, I have a big problem with the products that are supplied on that market and. I know that a lot of good kids are out there that have absolutely zero interest, myself included, when I was a kid, I had zero interest. In touching any of it, and I came from a household and went through foster care where that was prevalent. Very, very, very prevalent, and I had absolutely zero interest in going anywhere near it. You know, eh, to each their own, but regardless, it doesn't change the fact that it is very easily accessible from a number of different sources at this time. And if it is going to be accessible, the only thing, the only thing I want to be accessible. Is something that the state has to sign their signature to, and that's, that's where I stand on it.
And and that's a great point, I do agree, that you guys find that it's safety as well.
Yeah.
Um, that's one, that's on my pros list for like why I think it'd be a good idea.
Right.
Um, it just, on my list, the cons, uh, with pros.
And and we're not necessarily all gonna agree and I respect everybody's position here and. You know, I, again, I just wanna thank everybody one more time for being so incredibly respectful during a very difficult subject.
And I'd like to finish my points because I only got to point one, it's okay. So I just wanna make sure that my points are on the record, uh, because I am open to. It's not that I'm open to, I don't feel like I have a good gauge of the people's voice. And that's what I feel like needs to be here, my number two point, and I'd like to ask for, um, I believe it's the lieutenant that's here.
Yep.
To come up to the podium, please, because I have some, oh, like, serious questions that nobody likes to talk about. And I I really need to have some, uh.
I think that's the thing.
And if you don't have answers to this, it's fine, uh, thank you. Because, um. I have access to other information and, yes, I have put a lot of time. Um, into this, being the senior here, I've been here the longest, I've been along their journey that has just been. Turmoil and, you know, but the point is. The people's voice and the ones that vote are the ones that are speaking, it's not me, this is just my job. Um, what I wanna find out about is, um. Because I do stuff with the, like you said, sex trafficking, uh, what I wanna know about is, you know, what kind of. Mexican or, um, can't say Mexican cartel, but what, I'm gonna rephrase that, I didn't mean to say that, um. What kind of cartel activity do we presently have, if any, in this area?
Well, specifically to Colfax, I couldn't answer you because I do not have those statistics in front of me, what I reviewed from my presentation tonight was the. Encapsulating the s- the statistics for Placer County in a whole.
Okay.
You know, of those, of those grows, we do have personal use grows. We have, um, moderate to large-scale resident for profit grows. We have the Mexican crime organizations, and we also have, um, Chinese crime organizations that have grows within our county. Our our special teams that are involved with our eradication is, they are busy. Um, and I can tell you it is non-stop.
Yeah.
So, specific to this area, I cannot tell you that.
Yeah, cuz I, I mean, when you came up and spoke, like, I I heard everything that you said, but the two things that kinda like keyed out to me was, I heard cartel. You know, and and crime activity that is not, you know, of a small.
Correct.
Magnitude, so thank you for that, um, and I'm not trying to put you on this book for numbers or whatever, it's just I. Didn't have a clarity of, I just heard cartel, and I went, hmm?
And and regarding the black market too, what you need to understand is you're never gonna eradicate the black market, even with legal dispensaries, there's always.
No, I I know that part.
You know, behavior, um, so, to to say that, um. You know, having a supply source will eradicate the black market in a specific area is. Traditionally and statistically is not going to work.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much for coming up in clarification, anybody else?
I don't mind, while I'm here. It would be based on what statistics we would have for that. If crime increases is, which is the narrative across the country with with dispensaries. Um, crime increases, we're in your, we're in your town a lot more, um, we have a contract, we know what those hours are. Um, if we have to pull more than that, that contracted deputy into your town for that time in in those services. Um, eventually, if you're pulling more of our resources, um, on a consistent basis. Uh, when we go to negotiations, that would most likely be a topic of discussion.
Yeah, and I I I would like to clarify my point too, I'm under no delusion the black market would go anywhere, but when we talk about. Increasing accessibility, we're essentially saying that there will be purchases from that dispensary and that's where things are gonna be coming from. And if people have a choice between the two, and we really think that they're going to pick the adult use dispensary. That's what I would rather they picked. So just to clarify where my point is coming from, I'm under no delusion that the black market's going anywhere. Um, Marnie, you you had another question?
Yeah, my other point, and and it's not directed to you, so thank you for your, I mean, you stay up there or do whatever you want, but. My other point was, um, it goes back to those voices, you know, the voices that I represent. And the, I I'm very, I I want this on record, I'm very disappointed that I did not hear, did we get any letter from the schools?
No, we had was the substitute teacher, um, and Marnie, um. Hang on, nevermind, we got, we got one substitute teacher.
Yeah, okay, um, but anyway. Um, so that was very surprising to me because that's a voice that goes unheard, um. You know, and we're talking about safety, huh?
That probably would be the more appropriate avenue because the schools are outside of our jurisdiction, even though they serve our jurisdiction, so the school board probably would be the best place to.
Yeah, and from what I understand, the property taxpayers are paying for school tax, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I'm just saying, like, that's when, so when I say going back to my first point about I stand here and my job is. And what I've been voted for is to stand for the people and their voices, so that's what I wanna see here, I wanna, you know. See how do we get. The jurisdiction that I'm responsible for here at the table. Basically, and I, but I I, this, what you guys brought to the table, shows that there's definitely support. Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, we can do this, I apologize, no, that would be out of order. If you guys would like to have a sidebar conversation when we conclude, or even if you wanna step outside, you're more than welcome to, unfortunately, that. That would be unfair to everybody else here tonight, thank you. Um, Sean, do you have any additional thoughts now that we've kind of come full circle again?
No, I don't have any additional comments, thanks.
Okay, so, unless anybody on council wants to have additional discussion, I think we could probably go on all night long if we really wanted to.
Okay, now, to the business, I'd rather continue to support the current business, um, which I think. Pretty sweet deal, like, you know, I wanna say. Guys, and no other applicants were able to. Well, yeah, yeah, that's awesome, I'd say, I'd like to keep positive. Well, yeah, that's awesome. I'd say, I'd like to keep positive and support that, just again, whatever works, nothing. For adding adult use.
Well, and I'm just gonna throw it out there too, when we're making decisions, no offense to you guys and your business and your great track record. But when we make policy, it's absolutely wrong for us to make policy purely based on a single business, if that makes sense. We, we need to be doing it based on the market and the industry and those sorts of things. Otherwise, it's preferential treatment. It's, it's gummy. We, we just, we can't get into that. And so if, if we do, you know, move forward and consider this, we have to look at it from a frame of any business could be the one holding that license, not necessarily GSBC.
Yeah.
What happens when you guys aren't here anymore? You know, if someone else has license. Hey, we all, we all move on and do things someday. That's my way, nice way of saying that we all die someday. But no, you know, at the end of the day though, we, we have to look at it from that perspective. And so I would ask from that perspective, is this something that council would like to agendize to talk about? And I'm gonna go through one at a time and ask everybody, would you like us to have another meeting on the schedule to then discuss changing our ordinance, or would you not? Sean?
Clarification, changing the ordinance to allow adult use, is that the specific questions or change the ordinance in general?
To change the ordinance for the purpose of entertaining adult use.
Thank you.
So Sean, would you like to bring this back for that purpose?
I'm fine with bringing the item back for discussion.
I, okay, I want to be clear. What I'm asking is, under the understanding that we would be making official decisions in the following meeting. Are you, are you still in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Joe? Okay, David?
No, I don't want to leave him on anymore.
Okay, Marty?
Well, I mean, like I said, I really want to see those city numbers. So is that something that we would have before, but then it's gonna cost money?
Well, I think we're under the understanding that council doesn't want to go down that road. Unless I'm hearing it wrong, please speak up if I'm misunderstanding, but it doesn't sound like we have consensus from council that actually. Sean, did we have, what did, how did you feel about paying money to poll?
I said I was fine with that if people felt they really needed to get more information from our constituents. That's, that's, I'm okay. I don't think it'd be a huge expense or time, but.
I, I'm for it. If we get the information from the constituents, I don't want to come back here again and have this where I can't, I mean, I, I thought I could gauge it. I can't gauge the numbers.
In that case, I'm gonna say the same. I am also, I would like staff to move forward with scheduling that meeting where we will then make decisions. And in the time before that meeting is scheduled, I would like us to conduct an official poll. I understand that, yes.
That has to be placed on an agenda for.
Yep.
About our timeline, so obviously we need to do the polling first because we don't have a consensus amongst council as to whether or not to move forward with adult use or not.
Right.
Which is gonna take time. May take months or more to even pull all that together because we gotta solicit, find someone, re-agendize it, get council's approval for the, the funding on it. And particularly, the other question need to answer is, is there any parameters in the polling that council wishes the polling company to address, is very specific question council wants to drive in this conversation as part of the poll. I mean, the way you context, the way you context the question changes its meaning.
Right.
Very different ways. Staff is not comfortable being the ones to create that.
Okay.
Which means that we would need to bring forward not only the contract for the polling, but also discussion on the language for the polling. Once we bring on the polling company, we would have some recommendations. Council would subsequently need to vote on that language as well too. And then once that's all done, we can initiate the polling and then bring it back for council for a further discussion on how we want to move forward.
Okay, so.
So that's, that's, that's gonna take quite some time.
Based on that context, Sean and Marty, is that still something that you want to move forward with? Sean, I'll, I'll go with you first.
I had, we don't have to move forward with it. I'm fine with moving forward with just putting it on the agenda. I was just saying, if, if everybody felt it was beneficial, I'm okay with it too.
Yeah, and if because I can't measure this, like, I'm not ready to change my position in my vote because of what I know that my people have told me, you know what I'm saying? So how can I gauge it?
So I guess the question right now, I think what Sean is trying to kind of get at is, Marty, it sounds like you are adamant that you are not willing to say yes to the other item without first accepting a poll. Yeah, I'm in favor of either or. Sean, it sounds like you're either or. Is that the case?
Yep.
So if I understand correctly, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, we have three in favor of moving forward with polling. Is that correct? Well, it's a question to Sean and Marty. Do I have three in favor of polling?
I'm in favor of polling so that we can get an accurate number of who in this town that voted is in support of this because I just was the last one to run for reelection. And I'm not gonna go back on what I said I was gonna do without seeing new.
Yep.
I mean, we're talking 2018.
I, like I said, I'm, I'm open to polling. Sean?
I'd, I'd rather see that polling money go towards filling more potholes.
Well, if we're talking cost neutral to the city, we're talking about their money. So. I mean, if that's what they want us to do though, then that's not my prerogative. So if they really want this to move forward and those are the terms under which it needs to move forward and they have to pay for it, then so be it. And that's what the next meeting would be about. So Sean, would you like to move forward with the polling?
I don't personally need the polling to have further discussion or make, or get a better bearing on where the community is. I think we've heard a lot of, from both sides, what the community thinks about it.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, I'm not opposed to moving forward with polling either, if that's what, that sounds like people want.
I'm trying to, we want this to respect everybody's opinion. But I, it's, it's kind of a yes, no. Marty is a no on moving forward without polling. So if we are going to move this discussion any further, it's gonna.
Okay.
So are you?
I'm in favor of moving forward without the polling then. That's, that's fine.
You said without polling.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that as a no on the polling.
Yep.
Right now, staff has no direction.
It's, well, if, if somebody else, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like this is dead in the water right now.
That, that is what we're hearing from staff. I apologize. Make that point if you want to say so.
It's from what I heard from council, we have three no to move the, the adult use moving forward at this.
That's my understanding. Okay, so hearing no correction, that is our direction to staff. The item is dead in the water and we are moving on to item 10, good of the order. Does anybody, I'm gonna go ahead and start. Sean, do you have anything for the good of the order this evening?
Excuse me, mayor, but do we have item on assignments, or did that get taken off?
We only have item nine A under council. The next item is item 10.
Was that just for review?
Assignments. The assignments on, is on the inset calendar.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, good.
We had assigned Mayor Burris and Councilmember Tula to the council ad hoc policy committee.
Yes. Sorry, I just didn't.
And we're, we're allowed to talk together to set the time.
Yes. Okay, so good of the order. Sean, you got anything?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, Joe, you got anything?
No.
How about you, David? Marty?
I just want to use my time.
Is it on?
Yes. I just want to use my time to remember my dear friend Kelly Ladner. Her memorial is going to be March 3rd, 2022 at 1 o'clock in Placerville. Green Valley Community Church in Placerville, 3500 Missouri Flat Road, March the 3rd at 1 PM. Please, all of you, come out and give your regards to her family. She has actually left a minor child behind. And I feel really, my heart goes out to her daughter because this was an unexpected death. Thank you.
And Kelly Lander was a longtime Colfax resident, so.
We can make that out.
Okay. Thank you. Any, that's all you had? Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
I have nothing for the good of the order this evening. We will go ahead and move to adjournment.